It's amazing, too.
We're gonna watch you breathe down, man.
Yeah. I'm gonna start taking bets.
No soda either, no Skittles?
Eight forty-five.
My sugar, too.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. I call to order the Manassas Park Governing Body's interview work session for July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. First, we have approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. We have an agenda. On a procedural note for the folks at home, this interview session is for the purpose of filling one school board vacancy that became available through resignation, and the term expires June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. The applicants will have a three-minute opening statement, and Keith will be the timekeeper. He will approach the podium at the one-minute mark. We will have as many rounds of questions as there's time for. Each round will consist of each governing body member asking one question. Hopefully, we can have several rounds. Each applicant will then have a two-minute closing statement. Our current schedule has the public hearing scheduled for August third and the appointment scheduled for September seventh. The governing body will be voting on the FY twenty-two meeting calendar next week, and that vote will, in fact, finalize those dates. City Clerk will be in contact with all applicants throughout the process. So our first candidate is Ms. Harmony Bischo.
Oh. I was just asked to sit here.
Okay.
Is she here?
Yeah.
Oh, that's you. Let's switch. Come on.
I think, you probably thought she was Harmony.
I thought she was Harmony.
Okay.
Oh, no, she didn't ask me. I didn't know.
Okay, apologies.
Sorry, we'll switch.
Yes, please. I didn't mention you were timekeeper.
Come on down.
Will the real Harmony Bischo please come forward? Thank you. Okay, let's begin. Councilmember Javid.
Hey, good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies if you're a three-minute opener.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
It's fine, it's fine. I wanted to thank you all for letting me come back and interview again. As I said during the last meeting, I wanted to be on the school board because of how much the town's education system means to me. Our family moved here about six years ago with the sole purpose of attending the schools. My daughters had looked at it as they were entering middle school and high school. They had seen how wonderfully diverse the schools were, and they wanted to be a part of that. We had moved around the country for the past, oh, gosh, ten years with my husband before he retired from the military, and they had lived in so many unique and wonderful places with lots of different people, and they really felt like Manassas Park had the diversity that they wanted to continue to have in their education and in their lives, and also offered the type of small town that they wanted to grow roots in. And so we've had two graduates from Manassas Park High School. We have one ten-year-old who will be entering fifth grade from Manassas Park Elementary School. When we moved here, I worked as a school director for a preschool and then decided I wanted to go back into teaching, so went in and applied to Manassas Park Elementary School, and I worked there for three fantastic years. It was wonderful. I can't say enough about Mrs. Tania, Ms. Tania Brown and Mrs. Stacy Mammon, and how welcome and wonderful and supportive they were. So not only were my children a part of this wonderful school system, I had become a teacher there and just knew, like, it's something special. There's very, there's very few places you find like Manassas Park, and not a lot that you find, that you can find that's the education equivalent as this place. So becoming a part of the school board, I feel like, would help me really become more invested and involved in the town that we live in and the education that I'm very passionate about.
Okay, thank you. And we want to thank you for stepping forward again and following.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Ready for questions now? Okay. So what's, I guess, you know, we talked about policies. Tell me what your thoughts are on providing mandatory tutoring service for underperforming students. Do you think that's the right choice a school, school should be heading towards?
Mandatory? Would these be performed outside of the school day? During the school?
I don't have a second part, but I guess.
They have cougar time and things in the high school that provide time to be implemented where it wouldn't be infringing on the parents, right, to have the students out of school?
I mean, during school, if there's time during school or after school?
I think that any sort of support for students academically, whether that's to go ahead and prepare them for college, to prepare them for a career or a trade, to get them into whatever field that they can most benefit from, or maybe even it's social, social and emotional learning, things that are going to support them, or there's nothing negative about applying that while you have them for the days in the school. And then if you feel like that's something, if the admin of the building feels like that's something they want to continue to provide after school, making it optional for if you have the resources and the, maybe the students who are willing to go ahead and fill in and do some tutoring, I can't see anything negative about that.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. Thank you. Again, Ms. Bischo for reapplying. My question deals with youth court. How do you feel about it at the high school level? Is it something that you think should be implemented in dealing with disciplinary actions?
Youth court? I can only say that if I'm thinking it's the same thing that I've seen in the past, would youth court be the, where they go into? An actual public courthouse? Or is that something they're doing at the school system level?
At the school system.
Oh, so.
They're giving themselves their own penalties for violating various rules and regulations.
Oh, okay, fantastic.
Usually a judge and a jury of their peers.
Okay. So we went through a lot of educational support training when it dealt with behavior skills for teachers, and part of that was getting the kids involved at the, I know at the elementary school level and the middle school especially, getting the kids involved with their own governmental qualities, having them come up and talk about what happened, why it happened, defend their actions, maybe admit that it was a mistake, or say what really occurred in their point of view, and having the other kids in our small circle. When I did fifth grade, we would have students talk about issues together in a classroom, and it was really beneficial. It brought up the rapport of the classmates, it brought up our classroom morale, to know that you could get up and speak with your peers and talk about things that you might have to face because you had done something that broke the rules of the classroom. But also, you would have to have a set of rules laid out that are very clear, created by the student body, who's ever going to go ahead and be applying the punishment, or not the punishment, but going to be held, held in the court. You'd have to have them come up with the expectations that, I mean, I love the expectations of excellence, and so using those as a format and, and making sure that every student understands what those expectations of excellence are and why they're important.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have an off-the-wall question.
Sure.
Occasionally, there are discussions about whether it's better to have an elected school board or an appointed school board. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, this is my first time ever applying to a school board, and so I've done the electing, and now I'm doing the applying. So I can't say that, I guess there's a positive and negative, right? Whenever you're going to campaign for something, it's a lot of effort and a lot of skill and a lot of door-to-door and getting to know people. I feel like I had the advantage of going ahead and doing that in my everyday life with being a part of the school system, getting to know people. I'm kind of a chatty Cathy. I'm very outgoing anyways, but when it comes to elections, that's, I know I've walked into an election booth and, quite frankly, sometimes just gone, well, that blurb looks nice, so maybe we'll vote for them. And being appointed, it's, there's pros and cons, right? I get to talk with everyone here. I write this essay of questions and things and answers that I want you to know about me and hope that I'm putting forth the best candidate that you want as the city council for your school board. You know, there's something personal about that as well. So when you're going into the public and you're advertising yourself and you're campaigning, you're hoping that people see you, and they're going to go in and vote and, and choose you and not just go, well, I know that person, so I'll go ahead and vote for them anyway. And when you come into a format like this, you're hoping the same thing, you know, like, you've seen who I am through just my writing and my presentation, and as a citizen of Manassas Park, I'm hoping that I am the best candidate, or that you will be appointing the best candidate, not if I don't get chosen. Obviously, that means that you feel that there's someone who better suits the needs of our town. Does that?
Thank you. Councilmember Maya?
What did you most like about working in Manassas Park?
Oh, my gosh, a lot of things. The camaraderie, the people you work with. I have not found another place, and in all the school districts that I've worked for and all the places that I've been, where the teachers support each other one hundred and ten percent. They would give you their last sandwich. They would give you a shoulder to cry on. They would come in your classroom and talk to your students that very first week of school when everything's off the wall and tell them, you know, this is your teacher and this is what needs to happen. They go to bat for you. The administration is incredible. They bend over backwards to make it so that you feel like you can make it through every year, and they give to you what you need if you go in and ask for it and talk to them, have open communication. There was never a time I felt like I couldn't go in and talk to somebody. And that goes for, like, friends that I've made in the middle school and high school as well. So it's not just teachers at the elementary school, but talking across the board. There are professional relationships that I'm not sure I'll ever be able to replace. And the diversity of the student body, it's incredible. These children come from everywhere. The parents want the best for their children, and they're willing to go ahead and work with you when you reach out to them. There's so many things to talk about that are positive. It's, it couldn't be just like one or two.
Thank you.
Bysner Banks?
Hi, Harmony.
Hi.
Thanks for applying. My question's gonna be about, I guess, our recent school report card, right, for our school division. We lag behind in comparison to the state in reading, writing performance, history, science, and math. That's all five subjects, y'all. So what ideas or what would you propose or advocate for to improve our student performance in those areas?
I've always been a big advocate since before coming here of empowering the students through giving them the ability to make changes within the school district and then the system. Multicultural festival, the parents would bring in all this food, the teachers would go through all the effort. It was exhausting, well worth it, but exhausting. And the year that our committee took it over, we decided, let's let the kids do it. They did everything. They sent out the invitations, they called the restaurants, they went ahead and did all the decorating, they had complete and utter ownership. So the students who were calling restaurants had to write a speech that they were going to go ahead and present when they called. So then they had to go ahead and have that proof read, take it back for corrections, re-correct it, punctuation, grammar, then go ahead and make a cold call to these places and say, hello, my name is so-and-so, and I'm calling for the multicultural festival. The kids who had to calculate what was the budget that we were going to need for the decorations, giving them ownership in things, they were striving to go ahead and get things right, making it so that they wanted to be learning. I had kids who made a commercial for the school to go ahead and present it that way, and they, they loved it. They got to know the technical aspect, how to run the cameras, how to take care of editing the video through their Chromebooks and all that other stuff. But really, when it comes to getting the kids to move forward academically, we have to start giving them some ownership in what they're doing. We can tutor them, we can go ahead and, and have them sit there and look at something, but really, it's engage them. What are they interested in? What are the relevant topics? What's the social media that they're really, really going for? Why should they be learning it? Instead of just saying, like, you have to be learning this, why? And then supporting them where they have the time available, whether that's through peer tutoring, having them work with a teacher who really, really fits with who they are as a person. Some kids in my classroom really learned excellently, independently using technology. So they would be using programs that were adaptive, and most of them were free, to go ahead and move. And I'd say, do you need some help? I'll let you know, Mrs. Bischo. I'll let you know if I need some help. Okay, keep going. And they would get not a sticker, not a prize, they would get a wow, here's your intrinsic motivation to keep going. You must be so proud of yourself. There's no, there's no easy bullet. We work with such a population of English language learners and, and kids who are coming in behind the curve of where they need to be to acclimate and gain the information on grade level, that we have to start working with them where they are in order to boost that up. Sorry, I have so much to say about that topic. I could keep going.
Thank you.
Well, again, so in your response, you mentioned something about building stronger ties with stakeholders. Can you give me a real-world example of how you've done this and how you might, and how that can translate to here?
For which question?
It was the first question.
Okay.
It was like the second paragraph.
Okay. I'm sorry. No, it's fine. I spent so much time on that essay that I was, I was like trying to, I went through every single word, every single word. So building relationship with stakeholders, I feel like, where to start with that? So number one, the students, right? You have to gain their trust. They have to know that you're going to go ahead and be there for them, so you have to work with them socially, emotionally, and really bring them up. The first month of school should be spent getting to know them and, and having them begin to trust the teachers, having school board members come in. Like, they don't even know who the school board is, and we, we never, we as teachers rarely even see them coming through. So that would be number one. Number two is the parents. If you can get the kids involved, like the multicultural festival, I've never had parents more excited to bring things in because the kids would go home and say, I'm having this thing and I'm running it, and so we are going to get involved. And parents would say, what do you need? What can I do for you? It didn't necessarily have to be monetary, it didn't have to be something cooked, but any sort of donation of time. And once they got invested, parents would be always ready to contact you and, and willing to talk with you. When it comes to other towns members, I believe in my first essay questions that I wrote, I spoke about involving a task force of, you know, the city council, the police department, the fire department, the schools, and having them work on things that are, one of the questions was, do you, how do you feel about school resource officers and something like that? But involving everybody. So if, if you feel like the police need to be a more positive presence in the school, and the police need to feel like they need to be a more positive presence in the school, then let's come up with something that we all work together on, getting the whole town involved. The schools are the heart of our entire town, and so the more we can bring into it, the more people we can have invested in it, the better off we would be overall.
In, in your past life, in the jurisdictions that you've worked, how did you do this? And what I'm hearing right now, you're giving me the perspective of a practitioner, but not the perspective of, there was a little bit of there, of a, of a board member. And we talked a little bit about before, you know, how are you going to make that transition from a practitioner to the C-suite? So.
Oh, I've been an admin before. So I spent a year as a director of a preschool. And in order to get parents involved, we had to go ahead and, and come up with the things that, here's the things that we want that, that as a, as a, as a board that you want to have accomplished. So how can we get the parents to go ahead? Who, who would fill that niche? How could we get them to want to come in and do that? What would entice them to want to be a part of that? And so you, you have to start out with the basics. What is it that we all want to get together and work on? Is it the, the grades? Is that what we'd like to work on? Is it the test scores? Is it the relationships between the students and the behavior modifications that we want to make to make sure that the schools are running a little more smoothly? I think the basic step is to go ahead and, and come up with a concrete list of things that the city council, the school board, and the other members of the community think are pertinent. So whether or not I'm a practitioner or in an administrative position, it all starts out with that communication basis. Nobody, if nobody knows what's happening and what needs to be done, that's where we need to start. And then as you begin to bring people in and they get invested into it, they just start to ask, like, from my experience, people start to ask, what else can I do for you? Because they see positive things happening, whether it's starting a community garden or going ahead and working on a project to clean up the playgrounds, running a carnival to go ahead and get a little bit of fundraiser for things that you need. It's, it's an all-hands-on-deck, but you have to entice the people and, and bring them in, so you have to choose the items that are of quality investment purposes for everybody involved. And you can come up with joint committees to do that. When you bridge the gap between communication and, and making sure that everybody's meeting the needs that they think are important, you're fulfilling that inner, you know, like, yes, I'm making a difference, and this is important to them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Javid?
So I guess, you know, the school is all for free and reduced lunches and breakfast for students, and, you know, there's usually a stigma associated with students.
I saw those kids.
Accepting those and, and then, you know, relying with the whole bullying policy. What, what's your belief or thought on providing free breakfast and lunch for all students?
I think if it's feasible, we did that this year in the school that I'm at currently, and it was amazing. The cafeteria staff said they had never seen so many kids come in and eat breakfast. There was, no kid was like, oh, they're getting breakfast.
Right.
It was, if it's, if it's at all possible and feasible to get the federal funding, that would go ahead and make that a possibility. I don't see any negative feedback to feeding children. My husband gets on, when we talk about politics, I'm like, if we fulfilled feeding children, educating children, and providing them with an equity of a start in life, you would be covering all of the, you know, hierarchies that you need to hit in order to get it so they could learn. And so if a kid comes in and feels like they can't get something to eat, I always tell, I always have snacks in my classroom, but that idea of, like, you can't think with an empty stomach. There's nothing that can happen, and if you've not eaten for a day or two, that's even worse.
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. My next question is, should students be given, should all students be given homework? And if so, how much per night?
I am unfortunately one of those teachers who believes there's no busy work, and if, if homework is busy work, then it doesn't serve a purpose. If homework is practice, it could be one or two math problems, so I can see what you're doing. It could be reading a, a short passage that I've sent home digitally or even, you know, texted or a little piece of paper, but I don't think that every student necessarily needs homework. A lot of our students are doing other things, they're working jobs, they're taking care of siblings, a lot of things that are going to try to boost their home life and make that better. We need to be meeting them where they are. Homework is, it has a place in some places, but I don't believe that every place needs homework.
Thank you. There's often discussion about revenue sharing. What do you consider the positives or the negatives of a revenue-sharing situation?
Are we talking about between the city and the school board and the school? I think if, what is that, a rising tide floats all boats kind of a thing? If the school, and part of my writing, I, I mentioned the fact that if we were to set aside some money, and I don't know how feasible this is, but it was just a, a thought, you know, set aside money for the, like, in a house, we own, I own a house, I put money aside for the, the things that are going to need, need to be repaired in the next ten years because stuff starts to go wrong. But if at some point you're like, all right, the windows for this building, some of them need to be replaced, so that's going to cost about this much money, let's set that aside. If you do the project and there's money left over, then the city takes it back and everybody, everybody is going to be a little bit better off financially. If, if the city doesn't have the money to give to the schools, you can't take it from there, but if they do, it's a back and forth. My, my opinion as a parent and as not just a teacher, but a, a member of our community is, our schools are something special, and the more that we can support them, and I've seen how we have started to support them more and more as the money has come forward, you know, it's one of those things, you can't get money from a place that doesn't have it to give, but when the city council has the money, they've given it over to go ahead and, and do the things that are necessary. But our schools are the heart of the community, and if we support them, they will in turn produce revenue that will support the community.
Thank you.
As an immigrant student, when I came to the school system, high school, I never saw my counselor. So how do you think, I don't know if that happens here in Manassas Park, but how would you think it would be the best practice to get every student to speak to their counselor at least once a year? Like I said, I only got an orientation when I came, but I didn't know what resources were available to me. Basically, it was kind of like jumping in waters and see how I floated, basically. So I kind of, I feel like sometimes immigrant students get kind of left behind because they don't have the questions to ask because they don't know what's out there for them. So how would you think, which method, how would you approach getting out, getting more outreach to them, more resources to them?
From the school counselors?
From the schools, yes, school, school counselors.
Oh, I don't know. Our counselors, Ms. Rose and Ms. Rupert, were undyingly incredible. I mean, they came to every classroom, talked with every student, had a drop box for notes and things, so, and as a, I mean, as a teacher, if I noticed a student was struggling or had questions, I would put in a referral to them, email the counselor directly. My, my children obviously are not immigrant students, but they had friends who were and would advocate for them to go talk to the school counselors when they had issues or things that they had to talk about. So I guess if I had to go in as an admin of a building, it would be to probably build a council of students and teachers that were in charge of making sure that all of the immigrant students or any of the students were able to go ahead and meet with a counselor and first stop with them and say, hey, here's the questions that you might want to ask, have them do the translating. We have some of the best translators in the entire country in our schools. The students are amazing, but going ahead and making sure that they're, they have the students, because sometimes they don't want to go and ask an adult. They are more comfortable asking peers. So if you have a group of students who are supported by staff, maybe to go ahead and be the outreach for, for the schools, give them the skills and the questions to ask and, and have them communicate it and get them in touch with the counselors when they need it.
Thank you.
Okay. School suspension and expulsions is going to be part of the responsibility of, of the school board. It's particularly high and alarming, actually. If you look at the rates by subgroups with our Hispanic student population, what would you do to, to reduce the school suspensions and expulsions in our student body?
So there's been a trend in student discipline where it, we had started a, a small book group club in our fifth-grade pod, reading through, called Hacking School Discipline, and it addresses the raging disparity between suspensions for students of color and talks about how to better keep them in the schools, because anytime a student is out, they are not supported. They are just feeling like, I'm getting, sorry, getting chills. They're, they're getting to feel like they don't matter, and so why should they continue to contribute to a system? And so looking into what other schools are doing, I'm, I'm very much a researcher. Whatever I'm doing, I like to see what, who's doing what that's successful. So calling another school district, hey, you had this problem, but you fixed it. What did you do? What books are out there to read? What can we share? We go through all of these really great professional developments, and sometimes they're amazing and sometimes they miss the mark on what we really need to be working on. And I know it's always a chosen thing, so it's always like the, the superintendent chooses something or the, the administration chooses something, but addressing this type of thing would be very much worthwhile. So I really feel like working with our strengths. Our teachers want those students to be here. Our administration want them to be here. They don't want them to be suspended. And so looking at what we can do to keep them here, what is causing the behavior? Is it outside? Is it inside? Is it financially spawned? Is it something socially spawned? Is it a peer mentorship that could help? Is it a one-to-one with a teacher or someone else? Anything to do to get those kids to stay. But really, finding out what works, because it's not going to be the same thing for every building, and it's definitely not going to be the same thing for every kid, but if we can start to work on what does work, then we're already one step ahead.
Thank you.
So in your essay, and I actually, I read everybody's essays.
Great. I love it.
That's what I do.
I'm glad somebody reads it.
Because we ask a lot, to everybody write a lot. You identified school climate as a priority, and so my question is, how would you characterize the current school climate? And what are some actions or initiatives or tactics that you think you might use to enhance the current school climate?
So I think if you ask a, a different person what the school climate is, you would get twenty different answers, depending on who you asked. From my oldest son, when he was in school, a lot of his classes were disruptive, they were loud, he felt like he couldn't learn through some of them because some of the other kids, who are the squeaky wheels, were just getting in the way, so he would just kind of sit back and wait for it to pass. So he would just kind of sit back and wait for it to pass. He didn't really feel connected to a lot of the people in the school. He just kind of wanted to float through and get out. My daughter made a lot of friends. She felt like she fit in with a niche and she never really had those types of classes. But the school climate is all over the place. I look at the standards of excellence, and when I first moved here, I read through them and I thought, "These are amazing." And then I realized that most of the kids don't even know what they are. And so when we're thinking about a climate, I think we first, as a school district, have to define what do we want our climate to be overall? Like, when was the last time we looked at, what is our motto going forth? What is our, our driving force? And do the kids know that? Obviously, discipline can be an issue. And it has been an issue from the elementary school all the way up through the high school. And a lot of times, I would have kids come in into fifth grade and say, "This is the first time in a long time I've had a quiet classroom." And you kind of go, "That's not a great thing." So what can we do to get that going? And really setting forth what's the priority as a, as a city council and a school board for what we want our schools to look at? What is the climate we want it to be? Do we want it to focus on social and emotional learning so that we can boost those kids who need that in order to get to the academics? Do we really want them to learn those standards of excellence? They are fantastic, but what do they mean? And what do they mean to our students? And with the high teacher turnover rate that we have, you know, trying to get the, the teacher buy-in to go ahead and say, "Yeah, these are the important things, and I know you're going to have to wrestle through parts of this and then get to the curriculum, but these are the things we have to focus on first." It's hard. I remember being a very young new teacher and thinking, "I'm never going to get to the curriculum." Like, these kids are never going to learn anything. They're going to get to the next grade and they're going to be like, "What did they teach you?" But when we have the teachers leaving every three to six years and getting new ones in, it's keeping that because it, when you have such a strong group, if you get a strong group of teachers and you have a climate where everybody knows what's expected, what should be happening and what it means to them, I think it starts to build it so that teachers would want to stick around a little bit more if there's a little more control and, and focus on what we think is important as a town and a city council and a school board.
More like organizational culture, really identifying that and clarifying it.
Really, yeah. I think we had that in small pods when I first started teaching here. And that's really what drove me as a teacher to keep, keep going because we knew what our focus was in our small grade group. Like, we knew what we were looking for and what we wanted to achieve. But I feel like some of the other teachers don't have that. And if they get in with a group of teachers who are, are new, it's harder to teach the kids what it is because you're just in this melee of, of kids and trying to make it through the year.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and we'll move into your two-minute closing statement.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank you for the opportunity to go ahead and interview again. It has been a pleasure. I am very excited that someone actually read all the questions that we wrote because it does matter. I feel strongly that our schools will drive fourth revenue for the city. I feel like our dip in student enrollment is part and parcel of the fact that parents and people are moving out at a slower pace than they're moving in. And I would like to see something that is so special as the Manassas Park City Schools really come alive and, and focus on the things that are important and could buoy up all the students because it is such an incredible place to be.
Thank you. We very much appreciate you stepping forward again. As I mentioned, the public hearing is probably August 3rd. The appointment, September 7th. Feel free to have your supporters either come in person and address the governing body to support you, or send an email.
Okay, perfect.
Or a phone call, whatever. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. And most of us do read everything that we're sent. So unless you want us to read it, don't send it to us because we will read it. Next, we have Ms. Leah Blackwell.
Going on.
They're not talking to her.
Right, we got to figure it out. And the kids aren't going to talk.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm her husband, Kevin.
Sure.
I can translate her answers if they, if you can't understand them clearly.
Thank you very much. We start out with a three-minute opening statement. And Keith will approach the podium at the one-minute mark when there's one minute left in the room.
Okay. My name is Leah Blackwell. I have lived here in Manassas Park for three and a half years, yes. I work at home, yeah. And I've done disability presentations. At, and I volunteer with the, the disability. What? Forgot what?
What's it called now?
What it's called now, okay. Oh, yeah, Special Education Advisory Committee, is that what you mean? Yeah, Special Education Advisory Committee, yes. For? Since you moved here, we moved here. Been a couple of years you've been on the CAC board. So? I'm nervous. If you can't tell. If I leave, live, anything out, let me know. So that's your opening statement? Yes, okay, that's your opening statement.
Thank you, thank you. And please don't be nervous. We won't bite. Okay. We will have as many rounds of questions as we have time for. Each governing body member will ask one question and then we'll move on and we'll try to get through as many rounds as we can. We'll start with Councilmember Javed.
Hi, good evening, welcome. I guess my first question is, you know, you say you volunteered at the, you know, Special Education Advisory Committee. Tell me what, what you see are some of the challenges that could be implemented with this demographics?
First, the one thing. Like to say is, the kids. Kids need more direction with, with what? Interaction with one another. That, the, the what? Every Friday, what? A, B, able-bodied, you need to interact more with the disabled kids. And I think we need to encourage it everywhere. The only, what? Not only, not only during, not during extracurricular, only during extracurricular activities, but also during school hours. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwell, for applying. I appreciate your effort. My question is, year-round schools? What is your, what is your opinion about year-round school? What do you see as the pros and cons about students going to school year-round?
What year-round?
I think. I don't like it. I never liked. Never liked what? Year-round schools. Because first, they would be hard on parents to, to what? Schedule. Schedule what? Homework time around, around their work time, okay. And then there is also the, the what? And about P, parents, say parent, okay. Having to. Just. Do everything that you used to do for schools. What? And find time for vacation. What? On other times of the year. The biggest that M makes it more difficult for them. So, not in favor of it.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwell.
Thank you. You mentioned, Ms. Blackwell, that your top, top priority is school safety. You mentioned that the ALICE training needs a major overhaul. Can you share with us what you believe is, is wrong with it or what needs improvement?
You had to ask me that. I need. We apologize. We, we have been scheduled for 8:20. We just happened to take a look just about an hour ago and saw that it had been changed to 7:40. So we came over here as quick as we could to be sure we were here on time. So we didn't have time to print out her responses.
Oh, we've got a copy.
We got them. I see yours.
It's ours.
It's like page 13. Here we go.
Check out my copy.
Here, you got it.
Oh, thanks. Good thing.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
So it's right here. I, what? So do you mind repeating the question?
Yes, be happy to. You mentioned your top priority is school safety. And you specifically referred to the ALICE safety system, that it needs a major overhaul. What would, what, what would be that major overhaul that you would choose to do, in your opinion?
What? The faculty needs to be better trained. What? Be better prepared to respond to any kind. I mean, any kind of emergency. No matter what it would be. Yes. That is what I meant.
More faculty training?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Since you are a member of the Manassas Park Special Education Advisory Committee, what is your opinion on how Manassas Parks deals with students with disability?
What? It has improved a lot, but think it could be, improve more. Like, what? I think. Want to say, see, see more interaction between the disabled, enabled-bodied kids. I personally am. Personally, in, just because I get stared at out at the mall by kids. And I was like, would like to see that stop. So, that's why. I think I would like this to happen because if more interaction, interaction takes place, I think the staring will eventually stop. Yes. So, but we need to take the first step. Yes. So, school system should, need to start to set up a program to, to to integrate the able-bodied peers with their disabled counterparts. Yes. Soon, by what? Sooner rather than later.
Thank you for coming tonight. And don't be nervous. Public speaking and doing this is not easy. The question I want to ask you is about, in your comments you talked about, was one of the responses gone finance? And you mentioned giving raises to the teachers? So my question to you is, how will you balance the pay raises with the priorities in your responses as well as other competing priorities within the school and stay within the budget?
I, I, as I said. As I said. The. Budget. Budget. For the. Contract services. Has jumped. A lot. So. I think we could. Cut back on that. A little. And then. Use that. To give raises.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Blackwell, for applying. And Mr. Blackwell, thank you. My question is about our school division students, our students in our school division versus the state. They scored poorly in reading, writing performance, history, science, and math. Versus the students in the state. What would you do to improve our student performance in those areas?
First. I would have. Students. Write. Write for. Five minutes. Every. Class. Session. A topic. Teachers can. Teachers can come in and write. Something on the board. And say. Whatever. Write about. Your weekend. Tell me. What? You did. Give me a paragraph. And. He can write. About it. And then. Then what? For. Math. I am not very good at math.
Neither am I.
Yeah. Teachers can. Start. A system of. Sort of what? R-E. Reward, rewards. Where. Students. Get a. Set. Number of. Of. N-M-A. Marbles, is that what you're, marbles, okay. Every week, okay. And. If they. Misbehave. They. Take away. One or two marbles. Just thinking out loud here. And. Whoever has. Those marbles. Has. At the end. Of the month. Gets. A prize, okay. I don't know. Something like that. It is. Cheap. Fun, okay. What? Way to. Entertain. The kids. And. Teach. The kids. It is. Outside the box. And. Also. Reward system. To. Teach them. Behavior, okay. Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Javed?
My second question is, right now, we provide free and reduced lunches and breakfast to students. What's your thoughts? And with that, providing that, there's usually a stigma associated with kids, you know, taking free lunches. What's your thought on providing free meals to all students? All of them, yes. Regardless of income. Income status.
I'm not in favor of it. Because. If the. People who. Can. Afford it. Should pay. That is. Always. How it has been done. And. Why. Change it. But. What? Were. You thinking of? The way. Be paid. How? Would you pay for it?
I think, thank you.
My question is about homework. What is your policy or your opinion about students being given homework? And if you do believe they should be given homework, how much should they be given each night? How many hours?
What? What grade?
All grades. I'll let you differentiate elementary, middle, or high school.
Two hours is. The. Is what? Two hours is what? Two hours. Per grade. Yeah, let me look at her notes to see what she wrote about that issue. Right here. Ten, where? Ten minutes. Per grade. Level. Is the. Role. Yes.
Ten minutes per grade. Thank you.
Did you want to add, but? I. I. Remember when I was in. Middle school. I had. So much. Homework. That I. That I wasn't needed. Used to. Stay up. Until. Ten o'clock. At night. Yeah. During, doing that. So. I think. The. The what? Middle school teachers. Kids. Give. Their students. More. Than ten minutes. At night, yeah. Per class.
Thank you, okay, thank you.
Thank you. The, one of the goals that the governing body and the school board has is closer cooperation, closer, a better relationship. Enhanced communication and cooperation. Do you have any recommendations for how we can move forward with that?
Cooperation. With whom?
Between the school board and the governing body. How can we work more closely together, have a better understanding of one another?
Maybe. Can have. Group meetings. Sometime. I mean. If we. Talk. Talk together. We could. Get on the same page. That might help. All right.
Thank you.
Our student body is very diverse, and there's a lot of students that speak English as a second language. What would you implement to better communicate with students that speak English as a second language?
I know. That. Lot of students. Lot of students. Speak. English as a second language. And. Sympathetic to that. What? But. I. I what? Really don't have. Any ideas. Any ideas. To help them. But I'm willing to. Work with. Work with. The counselor, counselor, who, counselor is okay. Okay.
Thank you.
My question is, what would you do to reduce suspensions and expulsions in schools? Especially in our Hispanic student population, it's alarmingly high rate.
Make them work. Around the school. Instead of. Suspending them. Yeah. I mean. Put. Make them. Don't know. Clean. Or. Put. Books back. And. Library. Or. Help. Cafeteria worker. Clean the. Dishes. Because if they. Stay home. They will. Watch TV. That's not punishment, yeah. My brother. Used to get. Suspended. All the time. When he was little. Yeah. And. Trust me. That. Never worked, yeah. So. He. Needed. Some real work. To. Straighten him out. But it was. It. As. Is. Circumstances. Were different. Okay, okay.
Thank you.
And Ms. Blackwell, you mentioned the interaction between able-bodied students and disabled students. How would you go, what were some recommendations would you have if you're on the school board to make that happen within our school system?
First. When. I was. In high school. I had. I had. Peer. Peer helpers. They were. They were. They were the. Other kids. In class. Who would. Help with my books. Help what? To, during, in the hallway. Turning in my homework. Helping me get to. Helping me get the other class. Stuff like that. Sometimes. I mean. Help me. Get. Get in trouble. But. They really. Really. Increased. My interaction, my independence. So. I. Basically. Want, would. Tell my. Attendant to. Get lost. After. First couple of weeks, okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Don't think we have time for another complete round of questions, so I would ask the governing body, does anyone have a specific question that you would like to ask? Councilmember Moore, do you?
I'm good.
Okay, Councilmember Javed?
No, I think you guys have some good questions.
Okay, okay. We invite you to give your two-minute closing statement.
Okay. Thank you for. This opportunity. I hope. You will. Consider me. As a. Member. This, I mean, the school board, yes. Yes. And. I. Await your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We, Mr. and Mrs. Blackwell, we really appreciate you, your presence here this evening. Thank you for making application, stepping forward, wanting to serve the city in this way. We appreciate that. Our city clerk, Ms. Connor, will be in contact with actually all the applicants through the process. As I mentioned earlier, the public hearing is August 3rd, appointment on September 7th. We invite you to have your supporters send emails or come in person and speak. More than welcome to do that. And thanks again.
Thank you.
Should we, should we what? Let Aaron?
Ms. Barbara Browning? Good evening. Thank you so much for making application, stepping forward to serve the city in this way. We appreciate that. Appreciate your presence here this evening. You, you've probably pretty well heard the drill by now, how, how things are going to unfold, so let's go ahead and start with your three-minute opening statement.
Okay. I've had a, a unique experience that I think prepares me for this opportunity. I started off my career in the education system, teaching high school and then quickly moving down to middle school. I was very young, 21 years old, so I spent a couple of years in high school and then spent about seven years in the middle school environment. Teaching leadership, personal choice type curriculum. I designed it myself and engaged young adults in really thinking about the decisions they make and how they want to be involved in their community and how they want their lives to turn out. So that was kind of how I started off. I became extremely interested in getting more deeply involved in the community. I felt like the classroom kind of brought lots of red tape where I couldn't go so far into helping people in their lives. And so I took a position as assistant director in the nonprofit arena. And that actually moved me out to Los Angeles. So whole new territory, moving from Virginia my whole life and then stepping out there in my late twenties. So I spent 17 years in Los Angeles. I, I helped formulate like forum planning and community, community programs where the idea was to bridge socioeconomic, class, age barriers through building programs where people could serve side by side, but also open forums and small group discussions. Where everyone, regardless of their backgrounds, could find a common ground and we could go out and serve together. So I did that for several years and then started my own business as a professional development coach, working in the workplace and workforce development. And started serving in local city governing bodies. So I was a chair and vice chair of the Women's Advisory Board for the City of West Hollywood for eight years. So I do have a little bit of experience in really digging into the community, understanding the time it takes beyond our daily responsibilities at home and at work. And so in that I was able to develop programming and advise city council on the needs of women and the programming we could provide each year to really bring them a quality educational and learning experience that would empower them and help them live their best lives. So that is kind of where my passion comes from to even come to, tonight and then move back to Virginia in 2016, take care of my mother who was ill and spent the last four years up until last March doing that. So I've been very consumed with that, but I've been living in Manassas Park because my, my job is with Prince William County Schools and I am a multi-tiered system of support specialist for the county and I've really enjoyed that. So I've kind of got myself, my career figured out there and I've been there and really enjoying that career endeavors. So now I feel like I can settle down, breathe and do something in my own community where I live. And so I saw this announcement right before I left for vacation last, like last week, so, or week before last. So I saw it, I was like, ooh, I'd like to try this. And then the questions came while I was in vacation mode and I was like, I can't touch this until I get back. So I touched it, I couldn't really work on that until Monday morning and had to have it hereby too. So I would love to have really flushed out those questions more, really would have enjoyed that. But I did what I could as fast as I could. And that has brought me here tonight to see how I can be of service, whether it's this opportunity or I'm sure there's many others. So I just wanted to put my name in there and
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Javid?
Hey, good evening. I see you, you started your own business and you know, I'm a big, big believer in entrepreneurship. Do you think the schools are doing enough before graduation in implementing technical and real work, real work-life? I guess integration to their course loads? And do you think we could focus more on that before they graduate and get out there and either go to college or start working?
I believe there's so much more room for that. That is my, my passion actually, is making sure seniors are ready in some way. I think 100% of our seniors graduating should either be, have clarity on a two-year, four-year college or be joining the military or at least walking away at a bare minimum with some sort of certification where they have a trade or a skill and they can start a job within the next six months after graduation. I believe that will help the community and build equity in ways that we could never imagine. And so that will be a ripple effect throughout our community. So yes, there's much more we can do. Work-based learning experiences where students are not just in the classroom, the CTE classes that we offer, there's like 17 competencies and then there's the eight ways that we can offer it, which is mentorships and clinicals if they're going into more of a medical field. You know, the mentorship inside the, inside the company is vital, like putting a kid into a job opportunity, but they're just kind of there are no guidance or no one kind of coming alongside of them is tough. Because they have to be a self-initiator and be really confident to really find their way and look for those leadership opportunities to really grow and learn more about that, that skill of interest that they're looking at. So yes, getting that work-based learning in place, having a, a staff that is actually dedicated to that under the CTE arm, where they're, they're out there building community partnerships with our local business chambers, with the youth registered apprenticeship program. Working closely with VDOE and VADOLI, I forgot every letter of that, but it's about labor and industry. Those are the partnerships we, we have with Prince William County. And so I'm assuming that will be the exact same here. And we could really build a strong program where every student has that experience before they graduate. Thank you.
First of all, Ms. Brown, thank you for your application. Please tell me what your opinion is of, or how do you feel about youth court at the high school level and dealing with students' behavioral issues? Do you think it's something that should be implemented?
My go-to model, and it may have some elements of youth court, is restorative justice. So restorative practice, preemptive circles, where students are, are learning to respect one another in conversations, you know, throughout the school week and opportunities to really see diverse opinions and it prevents those behaviors, those, those situations that come up. So that preemptive, preemptive approach, so that it minimizes those discipline actions that tend to take place. But then also restorative justice where whatever happens needs to be dealt with in a way that actually creates a change of heart and a desire to change behavior. So that would have to be ideally something within the school. Bob Garrity is an amazing consultant. He's trained a lot of my schools that I've worked with on restorative justice. So that program has like a conflict mediation. If students are fighting or arguing all the time, for some reason they just can't stand each other, there is a mediation where they you know, teachers or point, maybe it's a counselor or some kind of point person who wants to take that responsibility, shuffles back and forth to ask questions to each student, anyone involved or saw the situation. And then if they're willing to bring them together and really have a meaningful conversation where everyone sees the impact of their actions, takes ownership, and then comes up with a solution together, which is a piece of probably the court where the peers, you are coming up with, what do you feel the natural consequence is for this and how can we work together to make it better? So I believe it can be implemented along with those restorative justice competencies, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You mentioned in your, in your comments, comprehensive compensation structure in order for the city to be more competitive. If funding were not available for the initiatives that you wanted to do, would you defer the, would you defer your plans or would you look in other parts of the school budget to see where you could find funding and divert it? How would you?
I don't have a lot of finance background, but I mean, to me, it's like, if we have done due diligence, we have flushed out our budget, everyone has given input, we have shown integrity and mapped it out. We can show that to whomever the powers are at the federal and state level. Like you talked about earlier, the relationship with sharing revenue, right, with, between the school board, city, the city. What does that look like with state and federal to bring equity when a school has done all they, is doing all they can? Yet they're, they're falling short in the budget. Is there, is there, are there funds there where we can actually, to create that equity at the, at the state level, federal level for schools, just like with students, we offer additional support, right? We offer what I do, multi-tiered system of support, we offer intervention for that student. Everyone doesn't get it. The students that are working hard and for some reason there's a deficit, they're getting it. So do schools get opportunities like that? I know there's funding that we can apply for and and I don't know how that works, but I would, I would imagine if we've done due diligence and we're still falling short, our teachers across the state should have, especially in Northern Virginia, the schools should have competitive salaries. I shouldn't be making 20 grand less than someone next door doing the exact same job. It just seems, it seems inequitable. So I don't have a solution, but to me, the state, federal somehow, they would step in and help us if there's, if we're doing everything we can.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think you mentioned the acronyms for the MTSS. Just, what does that stand for again?
Multi, multi-tiered systems of support.
Okay, and what is that in a day that you do?
Yeah, so there, so you have your tier one, which is the instructional level that teachers do in the classroom, the teachers that are there eight hours a day. And ideally, we're pouring so much into their professional development that they're, they're doing such an excellent job in the classroom and have the resources they need, that that minimizes tier two, tier three, which is what I'm doing. So so tier two and tier three, or tier two is students that need just some additional instructional support to catch them up to their peers. So I, like I meet with a student, I meet with a body of students, like five to six students at a similar level in math or reading or behavior. I also have behavior groups. For some reason, there's big emotions showing up and it's getting in the way of learning. So anyone with a deficit like that where there's, they're falling short, they're struggling to keep up with, they, they, they join a small group at the school level and they meet with folks like me for X amount of minutes, 30 minutes a day, five days a week is the best practice. That's recommended by the state of Virginia. So that, that student can catch up and succeed. And once they show that they're, they're there and they can stay there, you can pull that out slowly. Give some tier one support. That means the classroom teacher is mindful. She's been working with me the whole time anyways, and so she's going to make sure she continues something to bridge that gap as I move on to the next, you know, students' needs. So that's what that looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Ms. Browning. And thank you for applying.
Thank you.
So in comparison to our, our state average of students, Manassas Park School Report Card for the students lower in the areas of reading, writing performance, history, science, and math. So what ways would you come up with to improve those scores?
I believe tutoring before and after school, if parents will, will agree to it, like sign up their students, because that means they do have to drop them off a little early or through Zoom. With the pandemic, we've actually been providing tutoring before and after school for those students that you're talking about right there, to give them that additional support. So they are getting support from me during the school day if, if they're at that deficit level where they, they've been identified to get extra help. But then they're also getting tutoring before or after school. And we're all, we're all focusing on different things to build them up. So I may be focusing on oral reading fluency and how quickly and smoothly they can read. Well, someone else, they have a deep deficit in comprehension, so this morning person, this tutor in the morning is focusing solely on comprehension. So just try it, every deficit that child has, whether it's math, history, and you have to have, I mean, we had a lot of teachers committed to it too. That's, that's the tricky part. Unless you're going to hire additional individuals to tutor, sometimes that's pals tutors that have that skill, that background. But ideally, the teachers will step up also, as many, as many as possible that can and offer that as well. If not, you do have to hire additional support part-time to fill that void. So I think that's a a large part of it is just that extra additional attention that they need to catch up.
Thank you.
Good evening. So in your responses, you mentioned work-based learning. So my question is, what financial resources are needed to implement and to sustain a program like that? And then the second part, are there any exchanges or sacrifices to our existing offerings, offerings that's needed for, to make that program happen?
I can only speak from my experience with Prince William County. So our program, it follows our, the career and technical education and we have a a group of individuals that focus solely on work-based learning. I believe there's three full-time employees that are out there building the partnerships with the organizations I spoke of, the business chambers, the youth registered apprenticeships and working closely with VDOE and VADOLI. So that, they're, that's their job, full-time and they're, they're working with every single school, like high school, to build those partnerships and to work with the CTE teachers to make sure that that learning coincides with what they're doing on the job. And they, and they go into the jobs, they every, every grading period and X amount of times throughout the year, they are meeting with all the stakeholders that are working with that student to look at their progress on the job, their communication, their effectiveness. The, the student, the satisfaction with the program, is it still the right track? So they have staff actually dedicated to go into the schools to do that. And then CTE classroom teachers that are dedicated to supporting that effort from the classroom side of it, to make sure they're aligning that with what they're learning on the job. Funding, I mean, I don't, I don't know where that comes, I mean, that, for Prince William County, it comes from the county and they actually pay a small staff to be dedicated strictly to work-based learning. And then everyone else is just volunteering because you have employees in all these companies that are agreeing to give those students those mentorships and apprenticeships and all that, internships and clinicals. They're doing it, you know, out of kindness and they're, they're just offering their professional guidance. So you have that happening all over the county. So if you can get them in there at least and just have two or three staff focusing on work-based learning, then the employees of the businesses will really do a, play a significant role in helping us get them to apply all the things they're learning in the classroom. Thank you.
Councilmember Javid?
Thank you. I guess my second question is going to be about free and reduced lunches, as you heard, you know, the stigma behind it. Should kids all have free, free lunches regardless of their income status? What's your thoughts on that?
I mean, I'm all about Southern hospitality. The more you can feed someone, the better. I mean, if, if the, if the service, if the funds are there, by all means, what a wonderful community building opportunity to just sit and enjoy meal together, not have that stigma on you. I mean, it's, it's amazing. And you look at, you know, Maslow's hierarchy of needs, right? When those bottom levels of needs, safety, security, full belly, when that's met, the next step is self-realization, just be able to really feel empowered and grow and and ideally, I guess, at a federal level, that would just be something that's supported hopefully and that we don't have to take out of our own budget? I don't know. But that would be lovely. I think it's a wonderful thing and how could it hurt? It only helps.
Yeah, our current school system calendar is based on an agrarian model where kids didn't work during the summer so they could work on the farms and do the crops and that, we haven't done that in, in quite a long time. So my, my question is, how do you feel about year-round school? Given other major countries, particularly Japan and Germany, which are beating our kids as far as test scores and stuff, have year-round schools? What is your feeling about that policy?
The amount of learning that The amount of learning that disappears when that much time, I mean, even Christmas break, like a child with reading deficit, they will be like soaring. And then all of a sudden, they're back to the way they were in September when I get them. And I'm just like so depressed. It's like, that was too much time, you know? And I, I can't call their parents and, you know, and ask them to put them on Zoom with me during, you know, on Christmas and practice with me. So I think we can create a wonderful model. Our, our students still have time with family, little week-long breaks here and there throughout the year that allows for vacation and for just a relaxation and break from working so hard without losing all that memory and all that hard work that we... And it's hard. I mean, even just going away for two weeks for vacation, I'm back and I'm like, oh my gosh, I've got so much to catch up on. It's hard to get back into the sleep patterns, the, all the patterns. Like, it's really difficult, especially for a child. They love routine, they love, and they miss their friends. And, and students that are, that don't have a lot going on at home and maybe have things at home they just prefer to avoid and not be around, it is heartbreaking for them. I mean, when you see the buses pull off last day, I mean, kids are just crying with their face against it, and we're honking, we're waving. It's like, aw, some of those kids I know, they're going home to something. I just hope they make it back safe in September. I feel so terrible for them. So I love that constant support. I think it's best thing for us and it's just silly that we still take the entire summer off personally.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. The school board, as you heard earlier, and the governing body are striving for a closer relationship, more communication, more cooperation. Do you have some recommendations or what could you do personally to, to help us out there?
Well, I facilitated team building and strategic planning in the workplace for a long time. But I think we should have, whether it's quarterly, I don't have the answer to how often, we should get together and talk about what's been going on and look at the shared areas of common interest and, and give each other feedback on the challenges we've been seeing, the opportunities we see, the priorities that are coming up. And always be in that conversation with each other consistently. I'm not sure how often is reasonable, but as often as possible, where, so that too much hasn't gone on to where we've, we're out of each other's loop and we don't know what's going on and we're like doing more harm than good, not, not really helping each other. So I think that's important, just like in any relationship. When two people are too busy and just colliding and passing in the wind, it's never good, it never works out. So constant team, team building, some fun together, strategic planning, where we look at common ground, areas of interest, areas where we can support and strengthen each other, areas where we can brainstorm together and help each other out or share resources like you spoke of. We're family and it, we should act like family. So.
Thank you.
There are so many certification programs available online that are fairly affordable. How would you introduce these opportunities to students? For instance, you want to be a Realtor, right? You don't have to go to college for a Realtor. But would that be something that could be introduced in high schools? So that kids have, that don't have the money to go to college and don't really want to do a four-year college or a two-year program? Can they do these types of things and how would you implement them in schools?
Prince William County does that in the career technical education program at a bare minimum. And not that it's even minimum, it's equally as valuable as a two-year, four-year degree. Because that student with that certificate or that trade or that skill is going to make $300,000 a year while I'm a teacher enjoying my 60 grand, you know? So who knows what they'll do with that? So it is not a less than by any means. And so, and if we could treat it that way, just like this whole, you know, the eating and the stigma with getting the breakfast or whatever, we've got to get rid of all stigmas. So making that trade, learning that technical skill just as valuable and praise it and encourage it just as much as we are praising and encouraging the formal education. And helping every student to have a realistic conversation about what is possible. Because if, you know, you go chasing after something that the resources aren't out there at this particular time, you're just going to experience a failure and then not be able to really launch into a successful adulthood. So yes, we should have those trades in place. Real estate is absolutely wonderful. And it could be, I worked at Newport New Shipyard when I first moved back here as a leadership coach for managers. But they have, I mean, trades is their thing. They get kids right out of high school and those kids make wonderful money. And they go on to build wonderful families and buy homes and send their kids to wonderful colleges or whatever they want to do. And that's from steelwork. You know, that's a trade that is honorable and hard work to build the ships that keep our country safe. So there's so many paths we can take with that partnering with someone like the Newport New Shipyard, whomever, I mean, the sky's the limit to bring programs here locally that our kids can take and be done with in X amount of months and walk away feeling proud and that they can get a job for the next six months after they graduate.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
What ideas would you come up with to reduce suspensions and expulsions? Manassas Park in particular has a, a high suspension and expulsion rate for our Hispanic student population.
The restorative justice practice is the, is what I see as the answer to all that. And there's probably other models that are similar, that might do the same trick, but that's, that's what I believe in. It should be rare that a student is ever suspended. There's every, there's so much that can be done inside the school building on a day-to-day basis. And I see no reason why, except for very extreme situations, of course, where anyone's safety has been endangered or what have you. But typically for behavior, there is a way to connect that student to opportunities in the school that will help them rethink their decisions, help them express why they're behaving that way and make amends and take ownership for the impact of their actions. And that should be done by our teachers, by our counselors in the school. That's our job, to create those opportunities and to also take a preemptive approach in those restorative, those preemptive circles where they're communicating about these things before they ever happen, talking about making smart decisions, talking about topics that help them respect one another, respect their leadership at the school and their duty as a student to really apply themselves and make a difference. So I don't, I don't know how to flush that out completely, but it would look, it would look like us in the schools, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school, especially the high school, trying to keep those kids in to reduce that dropout rate and to, I mean, getting them engaged. A, a busy student is a happy student. So these programs, like we talked about, when you're working on a trade or a skill and you're going half a day to a job that you love, I just think those numbers will just take care of themselves. But I would definitely discourage the quick, get them out of the building as much as we can from the top down throughout our leadership to really get a commitment to impacting that behavior in a positive way during school time on school property.
Thank you.
So in your response, you noted that, that we should incorporate early recruitment. So for teachers, to increase the mixture of teachers. So my question is, what changes to our existing recruitment policy should be made in order to achieve that goal of early recruitment?
Well, one part of that, when I said early recruitment, is a little bit of a trick to the, to it. It was talking about young students who've shown interest. And I gave an example of South Carolina. They have a teacher cadet program. So they have 4,000 individual, 4,000 students a year, is what I believe I saw, who decide, I want to be a teacher one day. And when they finish high school, that's their plan, is to do that. They're getting that many interested into the teaching field. And it's all a cadet program, like, you know, firefighter cadet program. So when early recruitment in that way, getting our actual students recruited, but then also working with early recruitment as in teachers for, like, next year would be getting our actual relationships built with, with schools that have proven to be excellent at raising up minority teachers. So hit black, black schools, like black, like community colleges, four-year schools, do an excellent job. You see, and they're not, and not just black individuals, but of all races, creating a diverse group of successful college graduates that go into whether, whatever it is, teaching, whatever field, and getting relationships with those schools first and foremost, and being the first ones to meet their candidates and meet their graduating seniors is, is the first step to me, while also putting in something that gets kids excited about teaching at a young age, so that they're committed to it regardless of the salary, but a commitment to the actual love of seeing students thrive and, and succeed. So that when they get there, they're ready and they'll jump in and do what it takes to get the degree and, and be an excellent teacher. Thank you.
As a follow-up to Councilmember Amaya's question, did you say there was a real estate program in Prince William County?
I don't know. I just think it's excellent and I'm going to recommend it. I don't know. I'm going to check on it now, though.
Thank you, thank you for that. Okay, we will move into your two-minute closing statement.
Okay. So I am at a place where I am ready and eager to get involved in making a difference in my community. My involvement in the education system with Prince William County has sparked a passion to possibly be in that particular area here in Manassas Park as a community member who just wants to give back however I can. I believe my background and experience could play a vital role in, in building this team and helping us really make a difference. And I feel like my connection with Prince William County also, which, who we partner with along with Manassas City to really work together, especially in CTE, those three schools were supposed to be a really strong partnership, our, our three divisions. And so having that connection to Prince William County, I hope in the practices they're doing, hopefully those ideas will also, I could bring back to the table and help us do the same here. Thank you so much for your service. I am honored to be here with you. I know how hard you work and I know that you do it for the greater good of our community. So thank you.
Thank you for saying that. We, we thank you for making application. We thank you for stepping up to serve the city.
Thank you.
Take care. Have a great rest of the evening.
Yes.
Bye-bye, thank you. Okay, let's take a five-minute break.
All right. Hey, recess.
You can go play.
Go get the snacks, right?
Here's the fastest way.
Okay, let's take a five minute break.
All right.
Hey recess.
You can go play.
Go get the snacks, right?
Who's the fastest runner?
Except you got a Phillies hat?
Oh, yes. Yes, yes.
Okay, we're live now.
No?
We're live now, folks. Okay. Okay, we're back in motion again. For the benefit of the folks at home, I will go ahead and repeat the procedure. The procedural note for the folks at home. This interview session is for the purpose of filling one school board vacancy that became available through resignation. The term expires June 30th, 2022. Each applicant will have a three minute opening statement. Keith will be our timekeeper and he will approach the podium at the one minute mark. We'll have as many rounds of questions as we have time for. Each round will consist of each governing body member asking one question. Hopefully we'll have several rounds and then each applicant will then have a two minute closing statement. Our current schedule is that the public hearing for resident input will be August 3rd. The appointment will be made September 7th. The governing body is going to vote on the FY22 meeting calendar next week. So at that point, those dates will be finalized through that vote. So city clerk will be in contact with all applicants throughout the process and Lena can answer any questions that you might have. So with that, would you like to go ahead and start with your three minute opener?
Certainly. First, I want to thank the governing body for this opportunity to come out and to speak with you. I've been a Manassas Park resident for beyond a decade now and it's a place that I have really grown to love being a part of. I've raised five children through the school district. I have seven children in total.
Wow.
And one of my children, as a matter of fact, is still attending at the middle school today. So it's a pleasure to meet you. It's a pleasure to meet you. It's a pleasure to see my friends again and to have this opportunity to talk to you about my outlook for not only for Manassas Park, but for Manassas Park City Schools.
Well, we certainly thank you for making application, for being willing to step forward and serve the city. And if you could speak directly into your microphone, that's it's going to pick up better for the folks at home and for the video that we're taping.
Very good.
So thank you. Okay, Councilmember Javid, do you want to kick us off again?
Sure. Hey, good evening. I guess to minimize the achievement gaps that we see in our schools and I guess you will hear other councilmembers mention test scores. What's your thoughts on having not optional, but mandatory tutors for students that are not achieving their goals or standard, you know, have lower than standard test scores?
In regard to the achievement gap overall, I would say that before addressing tutors or anything like that, I'd like to understand really what achievement is on an individual basis. We all achieve different goals. We have different desires in life and for one, one man's trash is another man's treasure. And so I would think that we could and need to maybe develop an approach that identifies what achievement means for children. I think that one of the things that we assume is that all children want to attend Harvard or Brown or Chicago, whereas some may not. If within their chosen area of study or vocation, they are not achieving, I think certainly we need to find ways to effectively help them achieve. And I would hope that it would not have to be mandatory, that people that want to achieve will identify ways to achieve and I think things should be available, a tutor should be available.
No follow up. Thank you.
Mr. Rogers, thank you again for applying. Appreciate it. Our current academic calendar is based on an agrarian system where most of the kids would get off during the summer and work in the fields and bring in the harvest. Of course, we haven't done that in 50 to 100 years, but we still have that agrarian school calendar. How do you feel about year round education from Manassas Park?
Well, thank you for referring to my agrarian background.
Mine too.
I grew up the son of a farmer, grandson of a farmer, and I spent every summer in Dover, Delaware, picking potatoes and whatever grandpop decided to put in the field this year. And so I'll base my response on that. I really feel that regardless of whether or not we're growing potatoes and tomatoes and peppers and onions and green beans, that we need to have time with our parents. I think one of the reasons why I'm here today is that I had a grandfather who I could spend months of my life with. So I think we need to make sure that children are exposed to every opportunity to leave school and have that some period of time to go and to grow otherwise.
Thank you.
Thank you. You identified property taxes as one of the three top challenges for the school division. How do you view the property taxes as a challenge? Is it too high, too low? What are your thoughts on that?
I view the property taxes right now are too high. That is, that's based on people coming to my house just recently and saying, what are you going to do? Property taxes are too high. Have you decided to sell and leave Manassas Park? If I sell my home and leave Manassas Park, that breaks up my children's education. That breaks up my son's access to his friends. It takes me out of a place that I've really enjoyed living in. And so I think that affects, that affects the parents and children. Property taxes are high. We get out of here. Sooner or later, we don't have a, have students to educate.
So just so that I'm clear about what you mean, the high taxes make people leave or prevent people from coming or?
Both.
Both? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I see that you are the chairman of the board or CEO of Impact Manassas. What does your organization do?
Impact Manassas is a nonprofit community service organization. They focus on, focuses on getting resources, food, help to people that needed in the Manassas area.
Manassas in general?
Manassas area, yeah. Manassas in general. We stretch as far and we have with help to people in Maryland and even in North Carolina. We had a family actually moved to North Carolina. We needed to help them out getting settled and we did it.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers, for applying. My question is in regards to comparing our students to the state average of students. Our students lag behind in our school report card on measures, looking at reading, writing performance, history, science, math. What ways would you come up with to improve those scores for our students?
Well, it's, the issue is multifaceted. You know, one, to go back on what I talked about previously, a student who is not going to go to Brown University or Chicago or Princeton, but has chosen another area of or vocation to travel into, it's not going to be inspired in the same way that another, that a student that has chosen that will be inspired. And so that, I think that grades reflect that. I think that, that, that grades are a measure of so many more things than maybe we understand. But so I would focus again on what our students want to do with their lives and build curriculums that, that satisfy that. I think that grades will follow. Also, I think that one of the things that we need to do is look at teachers who are skilled in the areas that children want to go into. I've been watching the Manassas Park football team for the last few years because four of my girls actually played instruments. Two of them excelled in the Manassas Park High School Band. My daughter Jada was actually the drum major the last year that she was at Manassas Park High School. And I noticed that there were a lot of the children who were there who were excellent musicians, but at graduation, they were almost and also appeared, also played. And so I wonder a lot of times, where are they? And what do we do as Manassas Park to help them to excel? And so I would say that teachers that are skilled in not only teaching the students to excel here, but who can establish a link between high school and the rest of your life, you know, need to be looked for. I think that teachers need to be paid a salary that's going to keep them here.
Forward and serve the city. And if you could speak directly into your microphone, that's it's going to pick up better for the folks at home and for the video that we're taping.
Very good.
So, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Javid, do you want to kick us off again?
Sure. Hey, good evening. I guess to minimize the achievement gaps that we see in our schools, and I guess you'll hear other councilmembers mention test scores. What's your thoughts on having not optional but mandatory tutors for students that are not achieving their goals or standard, you know, have lower than standard test scores?
In regard to the achievement gap overall, I would say that before addressing tutors or anything like that, I'd like to understand really what achievement is on an individual basis. We all achieve different goals, we have different desires in life, and for one, one man's trash is another man's treasure. And so I would think that we could and need to maybe develop an approach that identifies what achievement means for children. I think that one of the things that we assume is that all children want to attend Harvard or Brown or Chicago, whereas some may not. If within their chosen area of study or vocation, they are not achieving, I think certainly we need to find ways to effectively help them achieve. And I would hope that it would not have to be mandatory, that people that want to achieve will identify ways to achieve. And I think things should be available, a tutor should be available.
No follow-up, thank you.
Mr. Rogers, thank you again for applying, appreciate it. Our current academic calendar is based on an agrarian system where most of the kids would get off during the summer and work in the fields and bring in the harvest. Of course, we haven't done that in 50 to 100 years, but we still have that agrarian school calendar. How do you feel about year-round education from Manassas Park?
Well, thank you for referring to my agrarian background.
Mine too.
I grew up, the son of a farmer, grandson of a farmer, and I spent every summer in Dover, Delaware, picking potatoes and whatever grandpop decided to put in the field this year. And so I'll base my response on that. I really feel that regardless of whether or not we're growing potatoes and tomatoes and peppers and onions and green beans, that we need to have time with our parents. I think one of the reasons why I'm here today is that I had a grandfather who I could spend months of my life with. So I think we need to make sure that children are exposed to every opportunity to leave school and have that some period of time to go and to grow otherwise.
Thank you.
Thank you. You identified property taxes as one of the three top challenges for the school division. How do you view the property taxes as a challenge? Is it too high, too low? What are your thoughts on that?
I view the property taxes right now are too high. That is, that's based on people coming to my house just recently and saying, "What are you going to do?" Property taxes are too high. Have you decided to sell and leave Manassas Park? If I sell my home and leave Manassas Park, that breaks up my children's education, that breaks up my son's access to his friends. It takes me out of a place that I've really enjoyed living in. And so I think that affects, that affects the parents and children. Property taxes are high, we get out of here, sooner or later, we don't have students to educate.
So, just so that I'm clear about what you mean, the high taxes make people leave or prevent people from coming or?
Both.
Both, okay, okay. Thank you, thank you.
I see that you are the chairman of the board or CEO of Impact Manassas. What does your organization do?
Impact Manassas is a nonprofit community service organization that focuses on getting resources, food, help to people that need it in the Manassas area.
Manassas in general?
Manassas area, yeah. Manassas in general. We stretch as far and we have with help to people in Maryland and even in North Carolina. We had a family actually move to North Carolina, we needed to help them out getting settled, and we did it.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers, for applying. My question is in regards to comparing our students to the state average of students. Our students lag behind in our school report card on measures, looking at reading, writing performance, history, science, math. What ways would you come up with to improve those scores for our students?
Well, it's, the issue is multifaceted. You know, one, to go back on what I talked about previously, a student who is not going to go to Brown University or Chicago or Princeton, but has chosen another area of or vocation to travel into, it's not going to be inspired in the same way that another, that a student that has chosen that will be inspired. And so that, I think that grades reflect that. I think that grades are a measure of so many more things than maybe we understand. But, so I would focus, again, on what our students want to do with their lives and build curriculums that satisfy that. I think that grades will follow. Also, I think that one of the things that we need to do is look at teachers who are skilled in the areas that children want to go into. I've been watching the Manassas Park football team for the last few years because four of my girls actually played instruments, two of them excelled in the Manassas Park High School Band. My daughter Jada was actually the drum major the last year that she was at Manassas Park High School. And I noticed that there were a lot of the children who were there who were excellent musicians, but at graduation, they were almost, and also appeared, also played. And so I wonder a lot of times, where are they? And what do we do as Manassas Park to help them to excel? And so I would say that teachers that are skilled in not only teaching the students to excel here, but who can establish a link between high school and the rest of your life, you know, need to be looked for. I think that teachers need to be paid a salary that's going to keep them here. And that they should have as well, meaningful, a meaningful track to excelling and to achieving the things that they want to. If a teacher works in Manassas Park City Schools but cannot live in Manassas Park, how good are they going to do for the Manassas Park children?
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. First, I will forgive you for bringing in a Philly hat.
I hate it already.
I've got two Nats hats in the car. So, I was reading over your responses, and in your responses, you talked about what means a Manassas Park High School diploma and world-class teachers. Can you expand upon both of those points for me, please?
Yeah, I can, without referring to Philly South. So, Manassas Park School diploma, what is it? On a personal level, on a personal level, my two youngest daughters graduated from Manassas Park City Schools. The older of those two girls was on principals honor roll, superintendent's honor roll, year after year after year. She never got a grade below a C in her entire education. She has a diploma, and she's chosen to go into a field of study that, a vocation for her life, right, that does not depict the grades that she achieved in school. The youngest of those two girls is now attending George Washington University. Same level of performance. I would say that the younger girl is a harder worker than the other, but they have the same diploma. What does it mean? When the youngest girl went to George Washington University, I assumed that with the grades that she received from Manassas Park City Schools, that she would get full ride scholarship, no question in my mind that she would. I assumed that her grades would win for her in education that she did not have to worry about paying for. But today, she's up to her gills and loans, and so I questioned that. And I can't, no assumptions, but I would hope that her diploma would say something. I hope that my son Alejandro's diploma says something when he leaves. I think that every child that goes to Manassas Park City Schools should have a diploma that says something. That this is a good school district, that the children work hard, and the teachers work hard to make sure that the children's grades mean something, that they are competitive and not that they were run through a process.
Okay. I'm following you now. And then the second part of that was, I put my glasses back on, I apologize, is world-class teachers.
World-class teachers?
Yes, sir.
Got to have them, right? I think, for me, as a businessman, as a team leader, people manager, I'd rather have the best employees that I possibly can have than have a big fat paycheck in the first year of my business. I'd rather hire the best and give up a few things in order to see the results that I want to have. I think that Manassas can do it. I think that we want to have our children, we want to have a community that our children come back to. We want to have a community where our children come back and raise their children. We want to have a community where our children can anticipate that their children and their children's children are going to get a good education, so why should I live here for the rest of my life? I think that starts with world-class teachers. I think world-class teachers bring people to Manassas Park. It happens in Oakton for basketball.
All right, my second question is in regards to, you know, stigmas in schools that we find. And, you know, some schools offer free and reduced breakfasts and lunches to low-income status families. What's your thoughts on providing free breakfast and lunch to all students regardless of income status, to remove that stigma that, oh, this kid is getting a free lunch and, you know? What's your thoughts on that?
A little interesting, right? A little interesting that there would be a stigma attached to eating. I feel like if the child is hungry, he needs to eat.
Right. Well, from his peers, I guess I would say, judging from other kids.
Yeah, I think that's swinging the bat at two different, two different balls. One is, one thing, you have children who are socially unaware, and then you're dealing with someone who's hungry. If they're hungry, you feed them, right? If they're socially unaware, you teach them, right? I don't know. I don't know if I answered that question, but, yeah. Yeah, my feeling is, yeah.
Right, good point.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Rogers, should Manassas Park School District adopt an anti-bullying policy to protect its LGBTQ students?
Manassas Park should adapt, adopt an anti-bullying program, period. Nobody should be bullied.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to go back to your top three challenges again and talk about student morale. But first, let me clarify the reason I asked you if you felt the taxes were too high or too low. I've actually had a couple residents tell me that we need to raise taxes and divert that increment to the school division, so that's why I wanted to clarify.
Okay, I've heard that too.
Yes, right, right. But it's all about balance, you know? Yeah, okay. Can you talk about student morale and how that would be a challenge? If you could just expound on that and provide your thoughts on morale?
In regard to the taxes?
No, no, I was just explaining why I asked you.
Oh, student morale.
No, if you could explain how student morale is a challenge. Is there a problem with student morale that maybe we're not aware of?
Oh, no, I don't, I don't think that it's anything that we're not aware of. I think that, you know, we've all been to, and I'll go back to the year that the high school no longer had varsity, a varsity football team. Where was student morale? Student morale left the building, and the children were wondering why they were playing at all, why there was a team. And I wondered, how much did we pay for those uniforms? It's not a good argument for me. The high school I went to didn't have a football team either, right? And I still had to manage some morale, right? I had to manage myself, right? I had to achieve. The school wasn't about football, right? It was about education. And so I think morale is a big issue, but I think that, yeah, definitely, we have, we have a morale issue. I think that we manage it in the ways, in the ways that we discussed. Children need to know that their diploma means something, and that when I graduate from here, somebody's going to say, "Oh, you went to Manassas Park." They say it about Patriot, why shouldn't they say it about Manassas Park? There's no reason at all, none. We have a beautiful community with dedicated people that love it here. We love it here.
Was there, was there another issue other than the lack of the team sport that caused a morale issue? Are there any other issues?
Not that, not that I know of.
Yeah, okay.
Not that I know of. I think that, you know, general malaise is, you know, something that...
As President Carter once said, "Malaise."
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
General malaise.
In general, nothing too specific.
Nothing too specific. I think that we have, we have, we have, in Manassas Park, we have things that bring just joy to everybody, right? But, but one of the things that we did, and I talk about it briefly, and you know about it, the car club that I'm the president of decided that it was necessary for us to respond to the fact that there were some children graduating and walking across the floor that reflected their lack of achievement because they weren't going to get a huge scholarship to go somewhere, right? And so we worked out a way that, okay, we're going to do something, right? But that's what I mean, you know? Is a child walking across the floor at graduation wondering what in the world's next, right? How do we, how do you address that? Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Rogers, how would you find those world-class teachers? How would you go about recruiting them?
Well, I think that, again, these are not easy answers, right? One, I think that our student body needs to see teachers that look like them, right? Some experience, that guy inspires me, right? And whoever they are, find them, right? But I think we need to have them. I think Mr. Claude Legrand, he's a world-class teacher, he could teach anywhere. And we, and Ms. Burkholder, she doesn't have to be here, she could be anywhere, right? Mr. Bergeron, right? Could be anywhere. But you identify those teachers, Ms. Polk, right? Who are devoted to the teacher, to the students, and you bring them here, right? I think we need them.
My question is, what ways would you come up with to reduce suspension and expulsions? In particular, in Manassas Park, we have an alarming high rate of suspensions and expulsions in our Hispanic student population.
Yeah, I go back again, Mr. Banks, kids need to see people that look like them. It has manifold benefits. One of the other things that I might do is, might, may not be in school, but I think that community activities, right, that, that involve student leadership, student energy, right, could be a way of just, just, because what you're dealing with is coordinating some energy, right? Right? If I don't give them something to do, they'll find something to do, right? And so some partnership, you know, some between the police department and the school, some partnership between the community center and the school, some mentoring at city hall or at, or at garages and libraries and banks could help identify where this excess energy to be burned off is, right? We don't want our kids being suspended, right? But it reveals something, that they have extra time to be suspended.
So in your responses, you talked, you mentioned curriculum development in your response. So I was wondering, again, if you could expand a little bit about that and as well as your thoughts about how that might be developed or expanded, especially given within our current budget?
Yeah. Well, looking at the fact that there was, and I want to congratulate the persons involved in the budget process and everyone involved with transitioning to the new environment that we're dealing with, I think seeing that teachers who were devoted to the schools during the time that we were adjusting to this new thing, seeing them being awarded is great. But in regard to curriculum, I would, again, go back to, you know, what do our kids want? What are their hopes for their life? And so if we're not offering basket weaving, right, and a person wants to go into horticulture, a person wants to go into masonry, a person wants to go into aeronautics or something else, printing or whatever it is, and we're asking him to go into mathematics and psychology and chemistry and everything else, and that's averse to him, I think part of making the city school successful is making the children successful.
So, what I'm hearing is kind of offering different tracks?
Offering different tracks.
So if a child wanted to become an astronaut, they could figure out through the school system, what's that first step to become an astronaut?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry if I wasn't complete.
Oh, no, no. That helps, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think we'll try for a third round, we might not be able to finish it, but let's go for a third round.
So I guess, you know, when you're on the board, you have competing priorities. How would you, I guess, balance some of the major ones, especially infrastructure, the kids are learning in the buildings and maintaining them and having them on a maintenance schedule? Do you think that is important to implement versus just focusing on either the pay raises or adding more curriculum? Should it be balanced, like, should it have an equal balance?
Should those two be on?
The buildings?
Equal footing?
Yeah, like the climate of the classrooms.
Infrastructure is tremendous, right? I think there's a hotel somewhere in Florida right now that is telling us that, that we need to look at, we need to take a look at these beams and whatnot. Should they be on equal footing? I don't think, that's not a question for me. I think that they need, they need to be. I think they need to be, and how you make that decision is a tough one. I think, you know, there's things that happen when you're, when you're looking at a budget that, you know, require more than one person to make that decision. Sometimes if you are, if you are the leader and it comes down to you, you have to make a very, very hard decision, you know, between, you know, who eats and who doesn't eat, you know, if we spend more money on infrastructure or if we actually put more books in the building. I think that, that's a hard one. Too bad you had to ask me that question.
Well, I like to provoke the mind, I guess. But thank you, though.
Mr. Rogers, what is your philosophy on homework? Should students be given homework at all levels and grades? And if so, how much per night do you think is appropriate?
Homework should be given at all levels.
Okay.
If you can't do the homework, you can't do the test.
And how much?
I think a child should be able to go to sleep before 11 o'clock.
Okay.
I think the teacher should know that there's some time between when homework gets done and daddy teaches you how to tie your shoes. Mommy says, "Let's go take a walk." Mommy says, let's go take a walk. Somebody says, hey, let's go cut your hair now.
Thank you.
If you're doing homework, if you're doing homework at 11 o'clock at night.
Thank you, thank you. Sometimes you hear discussions about which is better, elected school board or appointed school board? Would you, do you have any thoughts on that?
I think that appointed school board is, is, is the way to, to go. Uh, I'm, I'm 100% behind that. And the reason why I, I say so is because in Manassas Park specifically, we're small enough to know each other. We're small enough to know each other real good. I mean, I have seen you at the store before, but I've seen you in this office before. We get to, we, we get to interact with each other on a lot of different levels where we can actually know the whole person. And I think that's what voting tries to catch up with.
Thank you.
How do you feel about school communications with parents? Since you've had kids in the school system, how do you feel? Do you think it's, it needs improvement? Do you think it's fine? How do you feel that the school communicates with the parents?
Excellent.
Tori, you got a question?
Yeah, I got a question. So something that I've noticed as I've gotten older and dealing with new generations in the workplace, there seems to be a lack of critical thinking skills. What things could the school board do to ensure that the next generation of students have that critical thinking skills? Not just relying on rote memory and doing multiple choice questions, but true critical thinking skills?
Yeah, stop giving them the answers. Make them figure it out. I think that, that one of the things that helped me in school was there was a lab book. And I had to sit in the class and I had to do the lab. I had to do the lab by myself. I think that we could make this educational experience robust on application. And not, and, and not just rote memory. You're plowing a child's mind with information. By the time he graduates, he can't do anything with it. That's, that's an issue. So I think, and, and so application makes you apply, apply what you've just now learned. Right? And, yeah. I would, I would try to increase application.
So thinking more like essay questions, problem solving?
Problem solving.
Group projects?
Yeah, you do, you do half of your senior year of high school. Right? And we're seeing this be, you know, being done. Senior year of high school, you, you've done all of your, you've gotten all your credits and, and, and so now you go somewhere where you can use it. Now, I think that's, you know, one thing that the school is doing, I think is doing, you know, going, doing well. Children need to be able to apply to things that they've learned over the last 12 years of their life. Right?
Thank you.
Preston?
No, no questions.
Oh, we absolutely did finish it. We invite you to give your two-minute closing remarks.
Well, again, I want to thank, uh, each of you for the opportunity to, to come out tonight. I appreciate, um, the questions. And even though I couldn't answer them all, uh, I do, I do appreciate, I do appreciate, uh, the questions and, um, the reason why we're asking the questions is because all of us, including our children, are in Manassas Park. Right? And so I want to thank you, I want to thank you, I want to thank you for allowing me to come out regardless of what happens from here. I say it all the time, hey, we're friends. I look forward to seeing you. We're gonna do it, um, together. I'm, I'm committed to Manassas Park. Regardless of what happens with the real estate, real estate taxes, I'm not going anywhere. Up or down, up or down?
Up or down. Well, we certainly do thank you for putting yourself forward, you know, to want to serve the city in this way. And I can assure you, we don't expect everybody to answer all the questions because we can't answer all the questions that there are. Absolutely.
Very good, thank you.
So, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And Lena is always in contact with the applicants, you know, through the entire process. Any questions, she is the oracle at Delphi.
Okay. Very good, very good. Well, thank you all. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, criminal.
Take care, Mike. Regards to the family.
Thank you.
Well, make sure you walk by, Mr. Rogers, make sure you walk by the, the Ford Explorer and take a look at the two Nats hats and then-
I'll put your head.
Very good.
I get tired. Who's next?
Has Mr. Shoemaker arrived?
No. He's always just on time.
Okay. He'll come right at 9:40. I said he'll come right at 9:40 as soon as-
Want any more?
Yeah, give me some, please. Hit me. I need to pour some of this water out of my bag.
The coconut's good. You're up. Nature Rally. Oh, Amazon. She took your question, huh? About what does a, what does a diploma mean, a Manassas Park diploma? Yeah.
Yes, she did.
Oh, he says he's walking in the building. Okay.
Okay.
Is Mr. Rogers congregation a large congregation? Is his congregation a large congregation?
I don't think so. I don't think it's more than 50 to 80 people. But I'm guessing, I'm guessing, yeah.
And three minutes?
I think, I'm not sure where they meet.
Oh, okay.
I don't think they have a building, but I'm not 100% sure.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I don't, you know, go to too many churches. I go around during, you know. I, I'm a Unitarian Universalist, so, yeah. Yeah, I belong to Bruce, so if anything, we are sporadic attenders, right?
I hear you, I hear you.
He's just walking in the door, all right.
I thought, I thought he just- That was optimistic of me to think that he was closer.
Oh, he's bringing his apples.
Okay.
And fruit.
Snacks. It's been such a long day. He brought these snacks, so please take one.
Okay. You, we, we cannot be bribed, I'll tell you that right now. Okay. Um, I, you have observed this process so many times before that I've already stated the obvious for the folks at home, so-
Okay.
Why don't you go ahead and start? Oh, okay, you have a handout.
Oh, I don't know if it's a basket.
Thank you very much.
Pass it on down.
After my 40 minutes, I get to go home, but you get to stay.
I just wait.
Thank you. Oh. Oh my goodness, thank you.
Thank you.
Peanut butter, oh, okay. Would you begin, please, with your three-minute opening statement?
Okay, I'll try to be brief. I know we're just doing 40 minutes, so-
I beg your pardon?
I said I would try to be brief with my answers. I know we're just trying to do 40 minutes, so-
Absolutely, thank you.
You're welcome. I guess for the record, my name is Donald Shoemaker. Um, I've lived in this city for 42 years. I am a Manassas Park High School, class of 1996 graduate, so I'm very proud to be a graduate of Manassas Park. Now, um, a school division is very important to our city. I think it's very important. And we, um, we rely on them to educate our children. And, uh, which is one of our big responsibilities as a city. We're a full-service city, so we do everything. We're not a town. So, um, you know, I think it's really important. I have observed this process, as you said, from the other side. I've also, I've also interviewed before as well, so I've seen both sides of it. So I, it's interesting. It's, um, I don't know that you have a different skill set because I think, uh, some of the things that I bring to the, to the table are camaraderie, oversight and accountability. And I think those go hand in hand. You know, I believe that the school board and the city council should work closer together. And I may have put it in my, in my responses to you, a once-a-year retreat's not enough. There should be definitely more formal communication, um, from the dais, from the, you know, from presentations. Previously, I was a big advocate for the superintendent to, you know, often to brief us because, you know, to keep us up to date with what's going on, events, things that we can be a part of, and also bigger long-term issues that, um, that affect not only the school division but the city. Usually those are money-related, but not all specifically. So, um, I think the communication part is really critical. And we have a lot of new staff at the top at the school division with the new CFO probably coming, the new superintendent who just took, took over about 13 days ago. Director of Special Programs, uh, transitioning. So we have a large, uh, transition staff-wise and also on the school board. We have, you just appointed two members. One of those members was new and obviously one of the six of us will be new as well. None of us have served on school board. So it's definitely going to be a period of transition, but it's an opportunity to set a high standard as a board and also to be accountable to the public, to the taxpayers, to our, to our parents and our students, and also to you guys who appoint us. We, we should be accountable to you. You appoint us, and that's, that's how I look at it. You know, effectively, you're our seven bosses in the end because if we're not doing what we should be doing, you won't reappoint us. So I, I think there's something that has not been done before. And I think it, it's, it's a change that needs to happen because I think that we have to, um, oh, is that my three minutes? All right. I look forward to your questions.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I was gonna say, one other thing was, I did not watch or look at any of the interviews that happened tonight. So just for the other candidates that I didn't have an advantage, I purposely did not come in person and I also didn't watch the YouTube feed because I didn't want the earlier candidates to feel like us on the end would get some kind of advantage from watching questions.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. Okay. Councilmember Javet?
Hey, Donald. Good evening. Just to, um, my first question will be in regards to helping, uh, students achieve to level of performance in, in the classrooms. You used to be a teacher.
I did, yes.
And, uh, one of my, what's your thoughts on, um, making tutoring service mandatory for students that are not performing well?
Well, I think we have a large opportunity because we do have the, I think they're calling it the American Rescue Plan. I think that's the official name for it. That money is going to become available to us coming into this school year. So, a lot of times we can't do things because, oh, we don't have the money to do them. We have sixth-grade ideas and we don't have, always have money or, or the, the number of people in the right places in order to implement that, both on the city side and on the school side. I mean, you know, people are limited. There's only so many hours in the day. There's only so much time, you know, effort that can be made. So I believe that this new pot of money actually gives us an opportunity to figure out, okay, what areas do we need to kind of strategically place it in to make it the most effective? And I'd actually like to refer to a question that you had on the, I don't know who came up with it. It was, how would you close the achievement gap at the middle and high school and what additional resources would be needed? One of the things that struck me when I was looking at very, you know, we only had three days, three nights to, to write the responses, so I, you know, you only have so much time. But when I was looking at the test scores, the middle school has the highest test scores of all the four schools. So if you're, if you're specifically talking about achievement gap, the middle school is not where it is. They have the highest test scores in the district. So that's kind of an interesting, I, you know, I wanted to point that out because when you look at the National Center for Education Statistics, which is what I looked at through the state website, um, I did not make copies for you, but that is where I got it from. And you can go on and look for yourself. It has the test scores by subject area and by school. You can click on each individual school and you can actually pull up the test scores for that school. And it also compares the school to the division and the division to the statewide average for each of the testing areas. So that was something I really found interesting was that the middle school, um, had the highest test scores of any of the schools in the division. And, um, we've always had a strong middle school. We've had a strong teaching staff and we've had a strong, uh, leadership presence in terms of the principal and assistant principal. The ridge, you know, the, the assistant principal, excuse me, the principal at the middle school is now the new associate superintendent. Pam, Pam, she ended up going to the high school and now she's, so that just, that speaks to how strong she was as a leader in, in the school. And you almost kind of feel bad to take her out because she was so strong there that, you know, but she's done, she's, I look forward to working with her because, um, I remember when Pam was a first-year guidance counselor. It's how she got her start here in Manassas Park. And she's also a fellow William and Mary grad. So we, we had that in common. She went to do her grad work there. So, um, but I, I look forward to working with the team to figure out where is the best way to plug in the dollars that we have available to us, the extra dollars? And say, okay, we have achievement gaps in this place or in this place and this place. And we need to strategically put it there. Because, you know, spending a lot of money kind of overall can be okay, but if you want specific results, you know, I, I think you need to, to figure out a way to channel it specifically. You know, because then you're going to be able to measure, hey, we did, we spent this money in this place and this program, did it work? Now, we could do Saturday schools, not popular for students. Hope the kids have gone to bed already, but, you know, I mean, we could do lots of different things. I worked at Huntington Learning Center for 10 years and we, all we did was remediation. We did most, some one-on-ones and then our, our big group was four-to-one, which was fourth grade and higher. So I did 10 years of that where we would see students and it was interesting, we saw a lot of students from private schools, believe it or not, because there were gaps in their education. Because they had maybe moved around, they'd been in public school, they'd been in private school, maybe homeschooled. And so there were gaps in different places. So we were filling in the gaps, the places where they were missing, missing part of their educational careers or people also that moved around. So there can be gaps because I was in Maryland for four years and I'm in Virginia for four years and I'm- Excellent, thank you.
Hey, Donald, thank you for putting an application in.
Thank you.
To be appointed school board. In your response, and continue on with the question about achievement gap. In your response, your written response, um, about the achievement gap, you gave statistics on graduation rates.
I did.
Yes. How do below-average test scores at the state level for black and brown students relate to graduation rates?
Well, it was very interesting and, um, you know, all of us in this room, probably the people in the audience as well, you know, we know our community well. We're, we're six, our school division is 66% Hispanic. So we don't have the traditional kind of black-white divide that most school divisions would have. Our Asian graduation rate's 100%. Our black, uh, is 97, our white is 88, and then our Hispanic is 74%. And overall, it's about 80, 81. But when you look at the slices of students, there's so few students. I think for African-American, it was only like 40 or 45 students at high school. That's it. So it's a very, very small, like, grouping. So it could be very high or very low. You know, a few students would make that number very different. You know, maybe that 97%, that might only mean one or two didn't graduate. Like literally, that's, it's so, the, the, it's so small. So that was, it, it worked in our favor that way, but, you know- So that was, it worked in our favor that way, but you know, I don't know that, test scores are one thing, but also is it, you're getting verified credit? Are you passing courses? You know, there are multiple methods for graduation. You only need, you know, so many verified credits and once you have the verified credits, you're on track for graduation. But it's one thing and it is something I mentioned in another question was to make sure that, you know, that we're making sure that we don't wait till, you know, second semester, senior year to make sure kids are on track for graduation. You know, we need to, you know, they probably need to be started at eighth grade, ninth grade and make sure, because if you fall behind, you know, students who are, you know, second year, ninth graders are at high risk already because they're not progressing enough. They don't have enough credits to become sophomore. And so that's, that can be an issue is now they're, they're effectively a whole grade behind. And so now they are, they're going to be at risk for not graduating on time because, you know, they, they don't have enough credits in freshman year to move to sophomore year. You know, our four-by-four offers us a positive in that, you know, they can take, they could take the same course again if they failed the first semester in theory, you know, and some, and some kids can graduate early. Some kids will have, you know, by first semester, senior year, that they'll be done. They'll be, you know, they'll have enough credits, have enough verified credits to graduate. And I, and as I understand it, they have a few kids that do that, that, you know, not enough for a ceremony at this point, but, but they do have kids that are done a whole semester early because they don't need any more additional credits to graduate.
Just a follow-up.
Yes.
So how are you defining the achievement gap?
Well, it wasn't defined for me in the question.
No.
And so I kind of had to take it as a kind of a broad, you know, kind of a broad idea. But yeah, I mean, there is, there is, I mean, at the base level, the graduation rate is not equal among racial groups. But you know, it's not, it's not equal among special education students and regular students. And that's, that's by the state statistics that they submit. There's differences between socioeconomic, small, very small, believe it or not. It's actually the smallest gap, I believe it's. I want to say it's only one or 2%. No, it's not. It's 80. So economic disadvantages is 80% graduation and the overall is 81. So it's almost, the economics don't describe our achievement gap, which is, which in most districts would be, you would see a large difference between richer students, middle class and poorest, excuse me, poorer students. We're not seeing that. We're seeing it on English language learners, which are at 60. The language is our, is our, is one of our, is our biggest gap. So in terms of graduation, but those things are 12th grade, but they don't start in 12th grade. They start, you know, much further back.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. You mentioned, I wanted to ask you about something you wrote in your, in your answers. You mentioned in reference to the relationship between the school board and the governing body, better joint decision-making between the two bodies. What exactly do you mean by better joint decision-making, considering that we are two separate bodies with two separate responsibilities, one could say?
Right.
And, and aside from the communication and cooperation aspect of it?
Absolutely.
What do you mean by that?
Well, you know, I believe the school division should have a robust CIP and we should have presented to you. And it should be able, we should be able to figure out how they mesh between the city and the school board because, you know, there may be things that can be shifted. Like, oh, wow, FY '26 looks really bad. There's a lot of stuff coming. Can we shift something to '25? Can we shift something to '27? You know, in that planning process, you know, are there ways we can kind of, you know, instead of what we did do the last four years, which was we had a huge debt spike that we couldn't get out of, if we just had to deal with it? You know, things like planning in terms of maintenance, in terms of at some point renovations, you know, not next year, not the year after, but at some point 10 years out, 15 years out, we need to have plans and processes in place that outlast us. You know, that we know that we can hand it off, you know, and say, okay, Jane Smith, you know, Jose, you know, whoever is the person that's sitting in our seats, they can keep going with it. And it's an effective process that, you know, that gets things done and, and make sure that, because in the end, and one thing I want to highlight is, you know, the capital spending and the operating spending, they come out of the same pot. And as we found out, we had a lot of debt service. That squeezed us on the operating side for years that we're just now starting to come out of. And so I, I really think it's something we need to be aware of is that our capital spending and our operating spending for both sides, they come out of the same pots of money. And if we have that better planning, the CIP items are, are the big-ticket items that can really throw off because they're, you know, maybe once every 10 years, once every 15-year kind of projects that, you know, will spike spending in one year and then the next year it's, it's a lot lower. If we can kind of even some of those out, that's better for both groups and we can plan for those things. Hey, we need to put an air conditioning unit on this unit or this, you know, this wing because, you know, we're not going to do a roof for five years or 10 years. You know, we can, we can plan for those things. So that's kind of what my idea was when I wrote that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So kind of going based on the school board division and our division, what steps would you implement to make it so that we have better communication? I mean, we know there's a problem. We know that there needs improvement, but what specific steps would you take? Like how, how would you approach it?
Well, I, I would like, I mean, I think, I believe that I wrote. Sorry.
Presentation?
You know, when you pocket dial or something, you know? Everybody needs Little Rick Astley, right? So, hey, you know, you're on the fifth interview. You need some, some light entertainment tonight. So, well, I would like to see, you know, I would like to see the superintendent, I would like to see our chairwoman formally present. You know, you know, I say verbal things are great, but things in writing will stand time. And I think that gets to what you're saying is we need to have written policies, we have written expectations for ourselves as the school board that we're going to be transparent and we're going to be accountable. And when we say we need X amount of dollars for a new roof, we're going to have already done our homework. We're going to have done that before we ask you because we're going to say, we, we brought the roofers in and we had estimates done. You know, we, this is the lifespan of what we've done. This is, you know, this is what we're considering. These are our options that we've been looking at and have a good process in place that instead of the, the night you learn about it is the night that somebody presents it and asks for money, is that you know about that already. You know that we're in that process and it's public, that it's, that it's transparent and it, and it builds that trust. You know that we're doing the work that we need to do to educate students in a safe and effective environment, but also is that we're, we're appropriate with the dollars that we give, that you give us and also the federal money and the state money that we receive. So, you know, having a written, formalized process, I think helps, you know, because then the next chairperson of the school board and the next superintendent and the next mayor and the next governing body can keep following it because it's so strong and it keeps working because, wow, this is so easy. We're not, you know, we're not kind of fighting over money where we understand what the process is. And I think that, that helps. You know, people don't like surprises. I don't, I know I don't like surprises so much when it comes to money. I like to know this is what we're looking at long-term. And I think that's, I mean, the money things are what we usually will come to you for because, you know, you're our appropriating body. We can't spend money that you don't appropriate. And I, and I feel that very strongly. I was on city council and I thought that, I felt strongly about that. I feel strongly still about it. If I'm so lucky to be on the school board, it's, I'm not situational on that. I, I take that very seriously.
Thank you.
Hi, Don. Thank you for applying. I'm going to bring this back to the classroom.
Okay.
You've already mentioned you're familiar with the, our school report card, school division report card. In comparison to the, the state student average, our school division lags in reading, writing, math, science, history. What ways would you come up with to improve those scores?
Yeah, it's, it's a challenge because I was, I was, I was a little surprised in some areas how far below the state average we were. I'm not sure how much of that is our ELL population because if you don't know the language, you can't learn content. I mean, that's just the basic. If you don't know English and you're being taught in English, you're not going to learn content. You have to learn English first before you can learn content. I do know as Superintendent McData had presented about two years ago or three years ago, we were the only division in the state that's fully accredited with more than, I believe it's 50% free reduced lunch and a 40% ELL. I'm not sure on the numbers, it might be 50 and 50. We are the only school division that had all of our schools accredited. So, I mean, that's a testament to our educators who are, are teaching kids every day. I will say, you know, we look at our neighbors in Manassas who, if you look at the statistics and I put them right next to each other, you'd almost not be able to tell which district was which on paper. They're almost, the free and reduced lunch is the same. The, the racial makeup of the division is same. But they had, until about two years ago, they had several of their schools were unaccredited, were not accredited fully while we were. And that's a testament to our school board and our school staff who just have gone above and beyond to make sure that they're, they're, you know, they're touching each child educationally. And that's one of the things that our size actually is to our benefit is our principals and our teachers. They know every student and they know every family and nobody kind of slips through because they know every person. And that's wonderful. That's, that's, that's one of the things I like about Manassas Park is that we're still small enough where we know each other. We know our neighbors, we know our students, you know, through the school division and our families. Because you teach multiple children in each family, you know, the, you know, the Smith family or the Ramos family or the, you know, Whittington family. And so you've taught the older sister and now you have the brother. And so you get to know those families. So, but it is, you know, it is troubling. I don't know how much of the ELL number factors into how much lower we are versus the state average, back to your question. It's something we have to work at constantly though, because, you know, people rightly or wrongly, they're looking at real estate, they're looking at test scores because they don't know, they're from Nebraska, they get moved here in the military and they have kids and they start looking online at test scores because they don't know the differences in the divisions like we know. And so then they're like, oh, wow, let's stay away from there because their test scores are lower. Let's go here instead. People start making decisions based on websites that have inaccurate or misleading information sometime, sometimes because they'll say, oh, this is a three out of 10 and this school's an eight out of 10. What are they using to judge the schools? You know, you can't put a score on, teachers care about the kids and they want to see them succeed. That's a 10 out of 10 right there. You know, that doesn't matter what the test score is. That's a 10 out of 10. And we have some really great teachers in Manassas Park and I want to keep more of them.
Thank you.
Hello, Donald.
Hey, good to see you.
Got me up past my bedtime.
That's okay. I brought snacks.
So I'm going to delve into one of your points in your response.
Okay.
And you talked about options for non-college-bound students. So my question is, how do you plan to implement options for the non-college-bound students? And what resources are needed to achieve this?
Well, and I hope later tonight, probably not tonight, maybe tomorrow or the next day, you'll get to read the, the article that I gave you. That's from the Washington Post this weekend and its program in Fairfax County Public Schools, where they had students, high school students embedded with construction companies and partnerships that they had made in the community. And they were actively on home sites, learning and doing. They were doing part. I think they were doing some virtual learning because this was still during COVID and then they would have time, basically hands-on time in homes, doing the things that they were learning about from the, from the professionals. And they were saying that this is, was such a great program. I don't know if it costs the school division any money or not. I mean, I don't, honestly, I don't know. I know from what I was reading, I can't imagine that it cost more than what they would have cost them to be in the regular school division, you know, in a regular school. But it gives them such a huge hands-on opportunity. We could even partner with groups like Habitat for Humanity and, and Project Menda House, where they go out and they're specifically targeting senior citizens and also people with lower income, people, they have to qualify income-wise. And they go out and make repairs to keep people in their homes, particularly people who are disabled, people that need like a ramp like into their home because now they're in a wheelchair. Otherwise, they would have to move. And some of them, let's say they're in their 70s or in their 80s, they're older, they're disabled now, they may not, may or not have family that can bring them in. So they become, you know, headed to a nursing home, you know, or some kind of assisted living because they're now disabled and they need help and they can't stay in their home. So I know a person who received Project Menda House support in the county and it was able to keep her in her home. She wasn't, excuse me, she wasn't older, but she was more limited income. So we could definitely, we have, we have students that could, that could match to programs like that. And we need to figure out what the community partnerships that we have, that we could do that with. I mean, it's hot outside. It was 105 degrees in the truck today that I drive. Everybody loves air conditioning right now, but I, I would suspect that of the eight, the seven of us and maybe some people and other people in the room here, I doubt that most of us could fix our own air conditioning. I mean, if your heat pump went out today, it'd be a really hot night tonight, right? But those jobs pay well above average. So why don't we have students who are interested in those areas? Why don't we match them up with local contractors who are, or unions or, you know, nonprofits that are willing to help train them? And, and once they leave Manassas Park, they're in a career that pays for them to live here. We all know it's expensive to live here. They need to be in jobs that are not 9:50 an hour. They need to be in jobs that are 19:50 an hour or 29:50 an hour so they can support themselves. I mean, we have people in my, there are 18 to 24-year-olds in my neighborhood who are not working. And I don't think it's COVID-related. They're not working. What skills do they have? You know, they left high school, they might've been marginal students, they passed, they graduated, but they're not supporting themselves. And those are high-risk people to turn to drug activity and, and criminal activity. So we have to, we have to reach the people who are not, I mean, I'm, I'm a college graduate. I have 35 graduate hours. I mean, you know, but honestly, I'm in a job. I don't need any of that. And I make more money than our teachers make. So there are jobs out there that we need to figure out, hey, you don't need a college degree for this. Maybe you need a certificate. You know, maybe you need like six, six classes, five, six, seven classes and a certificate and be trained for them. And I think that's going to be the, the wave of the future. When you're looking at William and Mary now is a $100,000 degree now. Now that's the, you know, that's the price before financial aid, but how many people can afford that now? You know, we, we have a real problem with affording higher education because people believe that that's their ticket to a better job and a better life because they can support themselves and get educated. But that's not the only way they should be able to do that. We should be able to say, hey, you want to be in HVAC, you want to be in plumbing, you know, or electrician or in car repair. Car repair is not turning a wrench anymore. It's hooking a computer up and diagnosing problems in your car. And you know, if anybody's walked out of a car dealership with less than a $300 repair on your car, you come see me because it's very expensive and labor is about $120, $130 an hour. We have students that could do that. I know we do. And we need to get them into those jobs that, that can sustain them and give them, give them the base they need to be successful because not every student is going to go to college. It's not wrong that we want our kids to do better. It's just that not every student is on that track and that's okay. But there are other careers out there, you know, that, that pay well, but need training. And, you know, we need to figure out the path. We've got the new rescue plan money. That could be money that we use as seed money. Back to your question, is that we, we now may have a pot of money to say, okay, we've got unmet needs among our high school students who want to go into non-college, you know, tracked jobs. Maybe that's the seed money we have. You know, we pay $6,000. tracked jobs. Maybe that's the seed money we have. You know, we pay $6,000 for each student at the governor's school. And then when I read the statistics in the 2019 school year, we had one of those slots that was filled. The year before that, it was two. We were only lucky that we were able to basically lease out those slots to Prince William. Otherwise, we'd have had to eat in those costs, whether we had the students there or not. And just as a feedback point, I actually asked one of my neighbors a while back, why aren't there more kids at the governor's school? I was interested in what he would say. He just graduated a few years ago, about three years ago. And he told me, it's too hard and you're away from this, from main campus and your friends are back at main campus and you're over at George Mason and you're isolated over there with college students. I'm not saying it's a bad program. Maybe we need to rethink it. Maybe we, you know, we have one student out of, you know, you know, 500 and some seniors and juniors. You know, maybe we need to, you know, evaluate that and whether that's the right place to put the money that we're already spending. Not more spending is we're already spending that. Is it the best use of the money that we, that we're currently using?
Okay. I don't know that we have the time to get through a second round because your questions, your answers have been lengthy. Does, does any member of the governing body have a question that they would like to ask? And I would ask you, Donald, to please be concise with your, your answers. Any?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, I'm thinking. So we got one.
The question about the, you know, our calendar is based on an agrarian model where we have the summers off for our kids. We haven't had an agrarian system for a hundred years. So should we not go to year-round schools so that students can retain this, their knowledge longer? What is your position on year-round schools?
Well, we, we tried it a few years ago. We tried it. And I don't know, you know, one year, as we were presented to, one year, there was a big test score bump because they were able to do some remediation and retesting. And so some of the students who had failed passed the second time. So they count as a pass. So there was kind of a bump one year. But I don't know that the public is that for it. I think if more districts did it, it would be okay, but we're kind of the, if we do it, we're kind of the outlier and we're so small that we're not the, we're not the Fairfax, the Prince William, the Loudon, who if one of them did it, more of them would do it. And so then, you know, but also you have the issue with contracts. All contracts end on June 30th because it's the end of the fiscal year. So it's very difficult to kind of keep the, the school year going because you can't pay them after that. Like that's a hard stop there. You know, I think that it would have to come from the state if they really want to extend the school year and they were willing to put some money towards it. You know, I would, I would think about it, but, you know, we could do more robust summer school and have more kids in. I mean, that would be the, that would kind of be the fallback option is to do more, more robust summer school. That's not just three weeks, that maybe it's, you know, six or eight weeks of the summer so that they're, you know, such our ELL population, our special education population, both of those populations, by the way, were hit very harder in COVID because they couldn't, they couldn't get services that they're used to getting at school when they were home. So, you know, maybe invite the most at-risk students to be with a more robust summer school, which might kind of go to your, go to your question.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question?
I got a question. Hey, Don, I read your written responses, but what do you envision your role on the school board? I mean, you served on council. I mean, are you going to be the, the council's perspective on school board? Or what do you envision your role? Well, I think I bring a unique role because I don't have kids in the school division, like about 60 to 65% of all households nationwide. That's, that's what people don't realize is that a minority of households have schoolchildren. If you look at the board, there's only one of you that has school age, actually two, Yessi and Haseeb, right? And, and Alana's getting ready to. But only two of the seven of you guys actually have children actively in the school division right now. So I think that that's an important perspective. It's also important from a taxpayer perspective because it takes all of us paying so that, you know, 35 or 40% of the households with children can get a great education here. That's the reality is that we all have to pay. And one of the things that is maybe a bit frustrating is, is I hear, you know, as soon as my kid graduates, I'm moving. We've all heard that statement. We all really, if we're honest, we've heard that statement. And, you know, there's a part, there's a collective that we need to work on is, hey, you don't have kids anymore, but we need you to stay because your part that you're doing is supporting for the kids who are still in the school division. And, you know, that's part of, else why I see, is there were people there for me when I was in school that were serving on school board. They were paying taxes even though they didn't have kids in the school division. Well, now it's my turn. It's my turn to help the next, the next generation, the next cohort of people who are in school. And I'm, I willingly pay taxes on two properties in the city. And because I know that it costs money to run a school division and a fire department and a police department and the other, you know, other departments of the city. So I think I bring that perspective and it's important.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move into your, your closing remarks. Two minutes.
I didn't plan anything because I wasn't sure how many questions I would get. I just wanted to say thank you. I know I'm the fifth person tonight, so it's been a long night. You're in overtime, so now it means your pay actually went down. You're going down to 19 cents an hour instead of 29. So just, you just, you didn't know that. Your pay is actually getting less by each hour that you're here. But none of us do it for the pay. And that's one of the reasons. I mean, I, I don't need the pay from the school board or, you know, the title, but I want to make a difference. And I bring a different perspective that I think needs to be heard. And I think I bring a perspective of, of openness and accountability to the taxpayers, to the residents, to, to you guys. And I think that our school board now needs to set that higher standard for our new superintendent and our new staff, that that's what we expect because we know that's what you expect. And we know that's what the residents expect. So I, I bring those perspectives. I care about the city. I could, I could live anywhere. I'm single. I have no kids. I could move anywhere. I choose to stay because what we do here is important. What we do as a city is important. What we do as a school division is important because it's part of the larger city. And I want my colleagues on the school board to know that we're part of a bigger organization, that we're part of the city and that we all grow or fall together. We can't fail because if one of us fails, we both fail. So we both have to win. And I'm, you know, I want to be on a winning team. And I think that it also helps our students. You know, we have, we have so much potential. You know, we could have the next Olympian or the next person that's the scientific breakthrough on the next pandemic or, or we don't know. They might be here and we need to, we need to nurture them. So that in the news one day, it's so-and-so from Manassas Park, Virginia. One day we're going to get that. And I want to say, I knew that student won. I knew that resident won. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you stepping up to serve the city. We, we know you've already served the city in numerous capacities. So thank you.
Thank you for having me tonight. Thanks for the snacks, Don.
Think of the snacks.
Yeah, thank you for the snacks.
It's not going to make, it's not going to give you points, but thank you.
You know, it's the things you do because of the white.
Yeah. No extra credit.
Yessi got me on that.
All right. Are you driving or biking?
I'm driving tonight.
Okay. Drive safely.
Bye, Donald.
Next, we have Ms. Shante Jones.
No, that was really good.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Jones. And we appreciate the fact that you have stepped forward to want to serve the city in this capacity. We appreciate that. Thank you. I think I've already gone over the protocol enough, so I don't have to, to do that for you. Would you like to start with your three-minute opening comment?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with the board. My name is Shante Jones. I've been a resident in Manassas Park for 10 years. I've been in the field of education for 19. And I understand the field at different levels, from a classroom level, local, state and a federal level. I've taught in affluent neighborhoods. I've taught in neighborhoods with majority ELL students. And I've also taught in low-income neighborhoods with disadvantaged families. And when education chose me, I decided that my life's work, my business would be children and their education, the equitable education of all students and the professional development of teachers because I believe every child can learn, especially when they have a teacher who understands their assignment. I'm a lifelong learner and I have a passion for teaching and learning. For as long as I can remember, I wanted to make a difference in the lives of children. And I never wanted to forget what it was like to be in the classroom. And so you may see on my resume that I went from the state education department back to the public school system because I wanted to feel the pulse of the teachers, the students, the administrators and the parents for myself. I feel that my experience, my expertise that I've gained over the years with all that, that I should do my duty to serve the students and families in the community where I've chosen to live and to offer the board and educators view on decisions that need to be made and what effects they would have on the students and teachers, which students should be the first prior.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll launch into our questions now. Councilmember Javid?
Hi, good evening. And thank you for waiting. Last one. I guess I want to start off with the question, I brought this up in the last interview about school resource officers. I, I see you've been in some inner cities and some suburban cities and teaching. Do you think there's a certain stigma, especially with the minority students, of having a, a school resource officer present in a, in an educational environment? And do you think instead of having that, should we focus more on counselors, therapists and psychologists instead?
I do believe there's a stigma. However, that's just because of what's, what's happened in the past. If we were to rewrite history and rewrite what it means to be a school resource officer so that it's more of their community member, they're in an extension of what happens in the school and they're not like the enforcement and that students understand like this person is here and this person's going to help me to feel safe and not if this person is here to say, hey, I got you. Then that would be a great, you know, addition to the school. I also do agree that, you know, I have a psychology background as well. And so I do agree that yes, counselors, therapists, psychologists, mentors, they're all needed because we don't know even the level of trauma that some of our students have been through. And so it's, you know, teachers can't do everything. We're superheroes, but can't do everything. And so to have the help, the people that are there to actually be able to help and to be able to provide the assistance and the expertise that's needed to help our, our students feel safe and, and to know that people are there to support them would be very important.
Excellent. Thank you.
Ms. Jones, thank you for applying. Could you tell me in your definition of what the achievement gap is? I did read your answer, but if you could eliminate that more for me, your definition and, and what are some of the ways that we could go about closing that gap?
Sure. The achievement gap to me are, they're discrepancies between what is, I guess, expected and then what is. And most of the times we do see it at socioeconomic levels. We see it with different races and even with the education backgrounds of parents also has something to do with the achievement gap of the students that are currently in school. And so I feel like the achievement gap can be closed. It's hard work. We've been trying to close the achievement gap for as long as I've been in education, but I had a whole class on the achievement gap and that was back in 1990 something. So, you know, it's still something that we have to work towards. And I feel like even when you come up with a way of how to close the achievement gap, our students change, our world changes. And so you have to be able to continue to evolve. Unfortunately, there will always be an achievement gap because of the way that the world is. And so how we approach it and how we respond to it is something that as a team, schools and school boards and administrators, parents would all have to work together to try to figure out how to close that achievement gap. But we need to first get to the root of the problem. Where is the problem and what can we do to solve it at the level where we are?
Appreciate that. Thank you.
One of your three top priorities that you listed was facilities and the need to upgrade. So what deficiencies do you see in our school buildings?
I haven't necessarily seen deficiencies. However, I know that, you know, some of the schools were built a while ago and some things do need to be upgraded. I currently work as a disaster recovery specialist and I know more about facilities now than I ever had cared to know. Things, you know, and things that you don't even see that happen in the buildings. And so things that you don't even think about. There may be something happening in the roof that has, you know, there may be a little hole in the roof. You think, okay, it's just in the roof, but then something has gone into the walls. And now you've got mold in the mall, mall walls and you have children with asthma and you don't know why. And so even just doing upgrades to buildings, making sure that there's a routine maintenance schedule, making sure teachers are doing health and safety checks in their own classroom, just to even see, so we can kind of combat things that might come up because you don't know what's going on in the walls. And so my thought was in the walls, in the out, the exterior, even upgrading to make sure that they are, you know, schools are looking like schools and not like rundown shacks. Or, you know, making sure that even the technology on the interior is upgraded. I know for a fact that as a teacher, when I walk into a school building that has the bright lights, like all the lights are working, the air conditioning is working, I want to come to work every day. And so making sure that our facilities are up to snuff is something that like is very big to me, being a facilities expert now. And also as, as a, as a teacher, that's what I will want because it's going to make me come to work. I'm going to call out less and I'm going to really want to come in to do my job because my space, I feel safe and what I have, what I need is there.
Thank you.
Our students in the, our division each have a computer. So, and we have smart boards. So we're very, very advanced technologically. We've actually had this for, I think, six years now. So even for COVID. You had stated that one of your, I think, priorities was technology in the classroom and we're going to start to a 21st century. I actually think that the fact that my, our kids are really tech savvy because they are. I think we should implement more certifications that are online for our students to be able to graduate with some type of skills that will generate an income the moment they leave school for those that do not want to do the college path. How would you implement a program knowing that we already have the technology to actually graduate students with a certificate?
I feel like, just like the world, technology changes every single year. So yes, they may have computers. Yes, they need to be technologically savvy now, but we're preparing students for jobs that don't exist yet. And so even some of the teachers that don't have the technology skills that's needed to be able to help these students that need certain things. And so I definitely would partner with local businesses, local programs that are doing these things, even computer science divisions at colleges and universities. They are kind of up to what's, what's new in technology. And so being able to kind of meet with other folks that are in the field, I think that's, that would be a huge help because they're actually out there already doing the work. They understand what it takes to get things done. And so I think just partnering, partnerships are huge and they'll get you a lot of, of what you want. I've learned that. Just you go out and talk to people and you be surprised what they'll do for children.
Hi, Ms. Jones.
Hello.
Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
My question is in regards to our school report card and our school division versus the state average of students lags behind in the areas of reading, writing, history, math and science. What ways would you come up with to improve those scores?
I would first want to get to the root of the problem. Why are the scores low? Is it the students don't understand the content? Is it that the students don't understand how to take the test? Or is it that they don't understand how to use the technology associated with taking the test? You need to figure out what the issue is and then decide on what your, your plan of action is going to be once you, once you understand what the problem is. If it's the content, you know, what is it about the content? Do the teachers not understand how to teach what needs to be taught? I know when I worked in DC, the state Board of Education, when we, I was there for the transition to the common core standards and to using PARK. And it was, you know, originally it was just kind of like, okay, here, this is what we're going to do. But you can't expect, again, teachers are superheroes, but you can't expect them to know how to do something and you don't give them the tools that they need to do it. And so making sure that teachers understand not how to teach to the test, but how to teach the skills. Yes, the standards tell you what to teach, but they don't tell you how to teach it. And so being able to understand that will help us to kind of get to, you know, what, what is it about the content? Do the teachers not understand the content? Things are changing. Things are different from when I was in the classroom to what they are now that, that students have to know. And sometimes I have to go back and say, oh, And sometimes I have to go back and say, oh, I need to relearn that, because I didn't learn that when I was in school. And so sometimes, you know, what do the teachers know? And then if it's the, you know, how to take the test, then let's talk about what skills our students need and when we're going to be able to teach them. Because we are so busy teaching content, we don't teach them test-taking skills. And that's something that they need. And then also with the technology, yes, they may have the one-to-one devices, but do they know how to use the technology to take the test? They have to type essay questions. Do they know how to type? They have to be able to, you know, highlight certain things in different passages. Do they know how to hold down the mouse and drag it? So just different ways about, you know, how to use technology. So it would be getting to the root of the problem, and then we could figure out what the plan would be.
Thanks.
Good evening, because it is evening.
Yes, it is.
So I wanted to delve into one of your responses, and it was regarding the budget process. And you discussed involving taxpayers in the school budget process. Can you walk me through how you would involve the taxpayers in that decision-making process?
Yes. I would say even just asking, just a simple survey, something online that's quick, kind of just asking questions. I think about, you know, well, pre-COVID, I was writing the VRE to work every morning. Every year, I get a survey from the VRE about, you know, everything they want to know, so that they can improve their service. Why not do that with the taxpayer, so that they can kind of, okay, what are my choices? And I'll say, you know, I've lived here for 10 years, and if I don't go and do some research, I don't know what's going on. And so I think that's a problem. And I'm all, and I do that because I'm interested. And I don't know if it's that, you know, I don't have kids, and so I don't get information, I have to go looking for it. I don't know. But it's unfair for me, as a taxpayer, to have to go do my own research to find out, where is my money going? Why doesn't somebody just let me know? Send an email, put something in the mail, so that we can understand, you know, what's going on. And so I think you would also get, you know, survey, a quick survey, where you can choose things, where you don't really have to type out a lot, just to get some feedback. So whether it's, you know, do you have any ideas, or, you know, let me give you three choices, which, you know, rate them, one through three. So just opportunities to be able to give, you know, their voice. Not everybody is available to come to a meeting and to give a public comment, but so something as simple as sending a survey, just asking. Because I'm sure if you ask, people always have opinions.
And you're talking not just parents, you're talking about every-
Everybody.
Here, that strikes a check.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
My second question, I would be interested to learn, I guess, you know, I guess, No Child Left Behind ended a couple of years back, and I guess it was replaced by-
Race to the Top.
Every Child Succeeds, something. I guess the previous one focused more on standardized testing. Do you think the priorities shifted now with this new act on the local level? Do you think the school boards and the schools have shifted their priorities with this new Every Child Succeeds?
Good question. I'm not 100% sure if they have. If they haven't, they need to, because if this is what the federal government and the state is saying, or the state is saying that this is what needs to be done, then definitely there needs to be a shift. And again, things can't happen overnight. People have to have an understanding. I always believe in understanding the why, so that you can actually make something happen. And so I don't know if they have shifted their priorities. I, again, would hope so. I do know that there's funding attached, so if they didn't shift priorities, funding probably wouldn't be flowing as smoothly as it's supposed to.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Jones. My question is around homework. What's your philosophy about homework? Should it be given at all levels? And if so, how much per night?
As a teacher, I thought, yes, everybody gets homework. But then when I got it back, I was like, I want to check all this homework. Exactly. But no, I feel like homework should be an option. I don't feel like it should be mandatory, because sometimes, you know, there's parents that they're working two jobs to make ends meet, and so they can't be home to help their child. And so I feel like homework should be an option, but I should, and yes, it should be practice for a child, because I don't feel like if they go home, the parent should have to teach. That's my job. I want you to support me at home, if you can. Some parents are, again, like I said, they aren't able to do that, because they have to worry about, where's my next meal coming from that I have to put on the table? They can't be worried about how to do this new math. And then you have some students that do have that advantage, where their parents are able to come home and sit down with them. And so, yeah, they have that extra push that they need, but I feel like, you know, that's kind of, it's unfair to the other students who don't have that. I do believe in at least reading for at least 30 minutes every single night, because, again, that will help. Reading and comprehension helps with every other subject. And so I do believe that at least 30 minutes a night, no matter what grade, there should be some type of reading going on. But as far as just giving homework, for giving homework's sake, no.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I found your points about trauma-informed teaching to be very interesting. What is your personal experience with this?
In many of the graduate programs that I've been in, we've talked about trauma-informed teaching, and then there are a lot of things that you go and put into practice. Recently, well, yeah, but when I was in DC public schools is when I really started to understand trauma-informed teaching, because I was in southeast DC. There, I mean, there's a lot of trauma that the children are going through, as well as the parents. And even thinking about, you know, how to implement trauma-informed teaching, and then also, or in the classrooms, just to make sure that, you know, we are giving our students what they had to think about, which, you know, recently, now in my graduate studies, I'm looking at secondary trauma and how teachers are now impacted by the trauma that they endure that their students have. So now they have secondary trauma because they are. And so, you know, it's all, unfortunately, one big circle. But to be able to understand how to implement trauma-informed teaching, like, you can't, a child can't learn something if they're thinking about how their mom beat up their, or their dad beat up their mom the night before. And so we don't know what children are coming in with, so we have to meet them where they are, and just make sure that teachers have an understanding of what it means, what trauma means, how to address trauma, and how not to, you know, what might be a hot-button issue for me, and what I might, you know, scold a child for. Generally, I can't do that with this child, because it's going to set them off into something else, and we'll have a whole another situation. And that's not what we want. So just trying to help teachers to understand trauma-informed teaching, and that really, like I said, came through in my work in DC public schools, just understanding the trauma that children have gone through, talking with parents who are open enough to talk about what things that they are going through, so that you really have to take the time to get to know the families. You have to take time to get to know the students, to understand what they're going through, and understand how to address what they need. Yes, it takes time, it does. But, you know, we're all, I would hope that teachers are in the classrooms for students. And so whatever it takes is what you have to do to make sure that each student, each family is getting exactly what they need.
Thank you.
As an immigrant student, when I came to this country, in high school, I didn't see my counselor too much. I think I maybe saw him once or twice during my four years. I don't know how it is in the high school here, but if that were to be an issue or a problem, how would you address the counselors of the high school, reaching out to students to orient them in the different options they have for graduation or for career preparedness? How would you suggest that that connection, that communication would be there for those types of students? Because language is a problem, and then the culture is a problem, and the fact that they're new in the country and new culture, so it's kind of hard for them to reach out. So how would a counselor reach out to them?
Again, I would get to the root of the problem. We need to understand how this problem came to be at first. You know, are the counselors, are they doing too many shifts of lunch duty? And that's why they can't see the students they're supposed to see? Are they doing bus duty when they could be seeing groups of students? And so basically, you know, getting down to the root of the problem, is it that, do counselors have time to do their jobs? Because we put a lot on counselors outside of their particular job duties. So that would need to be addressed first and foremost. As far as the culture and the language barriers, I'm 100% sure there are different organizations that you can partner with that will provide translators. There may be some parents that aren't working and are able to come in and volunteer as translators. Of course, you know, because counselors are working with students, you have to get them to sign certain forms and do background checks to ensure, you know, but there are some parents that wouldn't mind coming in to do that. And again, I don't know, I know in other school districts, there's a language line. And so if you do need assistance with another language, then you can call that language line, and they basically can do the translation for you right then and there. It's just a phone call away, nobody has to come in, you call, you say exactly what language you need, they put someone on the phone that speaks that language, and there you go. So even having a language line that way. But then also, once we understand what counselors' job responsibilities are versus what they should be, they can come up with a type of a schedule. And then are there enough counselors? There may be not enough counselors in the school for the amount of children that need to see counselors. And so that also would be something else that would have to be looked at. Do we need to bring in more counselors? And how are they spending their time?
One of your written responses, I think it was to identify the top three challenges for our school system. You mentioned culturally relevant teaching slash curriculum, right? And our school division, we're 67% Hispanic, 13% white, 8% black, I mean, 5% Asian. And even within our Hispanic community, I think the majority is Central American. I mean, you've got diversity within that, between if you're Argentinian, or you're from Puerto Rico, or from Spain. So what do you mean by culturally relevant teaching slash curriculum for our school system?
So culturally relevant teaching, it's not a canned thing that you buy and you bring in, it's a process, and it's a thought, it's a mindset. So with culturally relevant teaching, the first thing that the teachers need to do is be able to get to know the children, whether that's, you know, through parent-teacher conferences, I know, and now, you know, I've worked for Head Start for a very long time, and, you know, it's a federal program, and parents are involved, and there's a whole set of standards. And I've been seeing that what we do in Head Start works, and now public school systems are starting to adopt it. In Head Start, before the children even come into the classroom, our teachers do home visits. They go to the home to see, and not to be a judgy, like, oh, you're living in this. No, it's, I just want to get to know who you are. I want to get to know how your child is at home. I want to know your child's likes and dislikes. So it's even taking that initiative to go into the home, to figure out what makes you tick. And, okay, now that I know this about you, I can go to school, and I can help, I can bring in some of your culture for you. It's, you know, it's time out for these, you know, one-day multicultural celebrate, it's time out for that. We need to involve the culture in everything, because the children are going home to the culture. They can't leave who they are at home when they come into the school. So we need to make sure that we're doing exactly what it is that we can in the schools, to make sure that everything we're doing is culturally relevant. And yes, you know, there are a lot of different cultures, but then it's up to the teachers, too, to kind of figure out, how do I need to differentiate this learning? So teachers also need training in exactly what it is that they need to do. I'm a big proponent of professional development, and so I also don't believe in this one-stop-shop. There needs to be continuous professional development, because just like technology, education is evolving. Every day, there's something new, there's some new buzzword, there's some new initiative, something, you know, they're going to try something out, it might not work, it might work, but this is what you need to do. And so just to make sure that teachers even understand how to implement this culturally relevant teaching, that it's not, you know, just going to be, oh, this is one more thing I have to do. But no, if you do it and you do it right, teaching is going to be so much easier.
Thanks.
So that sounds very similar to that teacher that came out of North Carolina that went up, I think, into the worst part of New York and took those students from, is it that same concept, where he actually went to their houses and took them from failing to high achievement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure I kind of understood it in my mind. So my question is into, goes into one of your responses. And you talked about developing high expectation for students?
Yes.
So what are the changes, what changes are needed within our school to implement and sustain a program, so that, well, first, how do we identify what is high expectations? And how do we go about implementing it and beyond that, sustaining it?
As far as high expectations, I once heard a quote that Title I tells you how a child eats, not how they learn. And so getting out of the mindset of, okay, well, this is an ELL child, this is a sped child, this is a black child, this is a brown child, and so I need to make sure that I'm doing the least for them. And I feel like the bare minimum is, are the standards. That's the bare minimum. And I feel like, you know, if there are high expectations, yes, we're going to meet, like, that's, it's kind of like when a child has chores and they get in an allowance for making their bed, well, no, that's what you should be doing. And so I feel like, you know, that's the bare minimum are the standards. And so to be able to, uh, lost my train of thought. Can you ask me your question again?
Sure, if I can remember it. This is the time of night where we all start kind of winding down. You mentioned developing high expectation for students. What are the changes within, you know, how are we going to go about identifying the expectations, implementing it, and more importantly, sustaining?
Yes. So we already have expectations set, the standards are the expectations. So one, we just need to make sure that they're meeting, you know, that. And so we need to think, okay, what next? We should always be thinking, what next? That, no, yeah, okay, they got this, they got these ninth-grade, you know, reading comprehension skills, and I'm done. No, it's, okay, what do they need next? What life skills? What executive functioning skills do they still need? So just setting those high expectations that, yes, I expect you to do what you're supposed to do on ninth-grade reading comprehension, but you can do more. And that it's okay to allow students to grapple with different things, it's okay. Not to the point where they get frustrated, but they should be able to grapple, because that's life. And so just making sure that students even understand that, like, you know, I have high expectations for you, and you can meet them, because guess what? I'm going to help you. So just in making sure that students feel supported, so that when those high expectations are set, one, that if a student knows that this teacher has this high expectations for me, it means that she really thinks that I can be something and I can be somebody. And once you feel that, and they feel like they're loved and they're cared for and they're nurtured, they'll do anything for you.
So stretch goals.
Yes.
With, on steroids.
Yes. With the limited time that we have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much for making application, for being willing to step up and serve the city.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. We'd like to invite you to give your two-minute closer.
Okay. I didn't write anything for this one, but I do, again, thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to come in and speak with you. It's not often that I get to talk about something that I'm so passionate about, and to just tell people about it that actually want to hear. My friends don't really care about this. So, yeah, I do thank you for this opportunity, and I hope that something that I've said or something that I've done has, you know, had you think about, you know, having me as part of your school board or in any other capacity that I could volunteer. I am, I never felt like I was ready to be a school board member or ready to do something of this magnitude, but I felt like, you know, now's the time. With the amount of knowledge, experience, the expertise, I don't need to just sit on this, and I don't need to just hold everything that I have. But I do want to share everything that I know, everything that I've learned, everything I'm still learning about education.
Okay. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming up.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Well, we are at the end of our work session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Done.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.